Welcome to this fifth meeting of the Planning Board fiscal year 2013. Mr. Lynch, his wife is in the hospital and he is at the hospital with her and will not be attending tonight. For viewers who may be watching, that impacts the 8:45 hearing on open space development off Hillside Street because a four-person board is necessary to hear it. And I have stepped aside because of a presumption that I have a financial interest, notwithstanding the fact that I actually have no interest, no financial interest. I do have an interest, but no financial interest. In any event, the law is badly written and I have stepped aside pursuant to it. Therefore, there are only three members available and the hearing cannot occur. So, for those planning to be here at 8:45, be advised that you would be sent home, although there will be some scheduling, scheduling discussion as to when the hearing should be continued to. And obviously, the abutters have an interest in a date, the date and the time. So, that said, we're now going to have a hearing on some proposed zoning amendments, which will be before the town meeting in October. And the law requires that the Planning Board make a recommendation to the town meeting with respect to all zoning articles and requires that the Planning Board have a hearing to help the Planning Board determine what its recommendation should be. So, the first article, and we're going right into this public hearing because it's 6:45 and that's when the hearing was noticed for. And if we have, when we have available time for citizen speak, we will, we will so advise people. It's a, the first article is entitled Assisted Living Residents Development, ALRD. And this article provides for a planned unit development, an overlay for residential districts for certain lots on a state highway with access from a signalized intersection. And the article goes on at some length, seven pages. And we look forward to your comments on this article. And who would like to be heard? Yes, sir? Well, that was not a hand up, that was a reach for the, reach for the zoning.
Have any comments, Mr.?
Well, I certainly, having written this article.
Having revised at least parts of it.
I have, I think that I know how I'm going to vote even without public comment.
Maybe we should give people the chance to have a look through.
All right, have a look, have a look through. And we're now going to go on to, we're now going to go on to the second article, which has to do with landscaping. And there's a lot, this is, as the proponents will concede, is a, a article involving spot zoning. It rezones a particular parcel on Blue Hill Avenue and Atherton Street, number 919 Blue Hill Avenue, containing .856 acres. And the question of spot zoning is, is of interest to me and I would, the board is going to have to resolve, they don't have to resolve that this is spot zoning, because it is. They have to resolve whether or not this spot zoning is permissible.
We should also note that it's a citizen's article, so the Planning Board is not putting this forward, it is merely holding the hearing and making a recommendation one way or the other.
Right, right.
So, we can't actually change the article as written, we can offer suggestions in the, in our recommendation if we choose to do so.
My, my feeling is that we probably are going to need the input of Mr. Flynn on the spot zoning issue, because as Mr. Corcoran will discuss, he feels that this particular piece of spot zoning is okay. So, Mr. Corcoran, why don't you tell us why? And you're not limited to that, discuss whatever you want to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Board. I'm pleased to be here this evening. My name's Ned Corcoran, I am an attorney. I'm a town meeting member of Precinct Three, an attorney representing Mr. Thomas Coulter and Coulter Landscaping, which is the owner of the property at 919 Blue Hill Avenue in Milton. It is a unique piece of property, unique within a Residence A zone. I have a small PowerPoint presentation with an overview of the site coming up shortly for the board's pleasure. And I have a handful of things to hand out to the board. I have five copies of a history of the lot in question. I have copies of the zoning map identifying the names of the abutters and the property that we're going to show as part of the presentation. I have copies of the abutter map, identifying all of the lots within 300 feet of the premises under the abutter notice provisions, and indicating that all but one of the residents within the 300 square, within the 300 feet radius are fully supportive of this project. The board's petition itself and other letters of support that have been written initially by neighbors and abutters and by others throughout the town. Unfortunately, a number of the, unfortunately, we had misinformed some of the neighbors that the, the hearing was at 7:30 and not at 6:45, so people will be straggling in. But I am pleased to say that the, that this is a citizen's petition that is supported significantly, substantially by the neighborhood in question. So, the petition arises out of some longstanding processes involving the Board of Appeals. This is a, an overview of the area. Route 138, Blue Hill Avenue is here, Atherton Street on the westerly side of Blue Hill Avenue, Atherton Street on the easterly side of Blue Hill Avenue, Canton Avenue, Bradley Road. The town's fire station is here and the property in question is here. And this is the property itself. This is Blue Hill Avenue, this is the light at, at Atherton, which comes in this direction, fire station is here, and Atherton heads in this direction. This is a property that in 19, until 1953, was owned by the town. It was originally a school, from what we can tell from town records, was a school, it was the summer school. The school was closed in the 1930s, it was ordered demolished by the, by the town meeting in early 1930s, was vacant for a number of years, and sold by the town in the early 1950s to a gentleman named Edward Fleming, who had owned and operated a florist and nurse and business with a greenhouse in Hyde Park. And he was having difficulties, as we understand, with vandalism with his greenhouse. And so, he applied for a permit to put a greenhouse with a residence on this location. And this is the house, and this is an existing greenhouse. And since 1962, when he was permitted to build that, the property has been operated as combination of residence and business, with various businesses through the years. Mr. Coulter purchased the property with his father in 1991, and since that day, he did a business in conjunction with other items. He was approved at various times for temporary variances and special permits, as laid out in the, in the history that I gave you by the Board of Appeals. In 2009, he was granted a variance to run his landscape business. And then in 2000, in 2009, that variance was appealed by his next-door neighbor. This is a neighborhood map that shows, identifies names, the parcels. So, this is the parcel in question, this is Blue Hill Avenue, this is Atherton Street. This is the abutters map showing the 300 feet radius provided to us by the town engineers. And this is that map colored in, showing all of the lots within the 300-foot radius and beyond, who had signed the petition and/or written letters of support for this project. The property next door is owned by a family named, Leyden, it's owned by a realty trust. So, this is the locus, this is Leyden, this is the town fire station. So, officially, the town fire station obviously could not sign on to a petition or provide official support of the town for this purpose. But we know that members of the fire department who worked there testified to the cleanliness and the nature of the business that Mr. Coulter operates. Mrs. Leyden lived here for many, many years and was a proponent and testified at one of the Board of Appeals hearings in the 1960s, when Mr. Fleming secured his special permit to put the combination of a residence and greenhouse at that location. She is now very elderly and living in a nursing home, and the property has been vacant for a number of years. One of her sons, who lives elsewhere, has filed appeals, trying, moving to enforce strictly the zoning bylaw, which does not allow landscape business. And he appealed to the land court, the decision of the Board of Appeals in 2009, granting Mr. Coulter the right to continue to operate the landscape business that had been operated there by Mr. Coulter since 1991. The decision of the land court was issued in May of this year. We have filed an appeal of that decision. Like any case, a matter on appeal, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a coin toss to determine which way that might go. But I was struck at a meeting before the Board of, hearing before the Board of Appeals in July, by the level and strength of the support among neighbors for Mr. Coulter's ability to continue to operate at the location. The issue before the Board of Appeals at that time was an application brought by the next-door neighbor to enforce the land court's decision to prohibit the landscape business. And we argued successfully that the decision of the land court was not an injunction, and therefore, the, the filing of the appeal acts to stay the operation of the judgment pending the appeal. And the Board of Appeals agreed with us on that. A number of the neighbors who I met that evening testified very strongly in support of Mr. Coulter's ability to continue to operate at that location, because the, because he's clean, he's quiet, he's respectful of his neighbors, and has been a good neighbor for a long time. I understand that the issue of spot zoning is one that the town could be concerned with. Spot zoning is an issue that's been addressed by the courts in this Commonwealth on a number of occasions. Spot zoning is not per se illegal. If a spot is zoned, places, if a single property is zoned, it places an initial burden on the applicant and on the town to establish that there is, that it was reasonable. There's certainly being, we're certainly requesting that the, that the spot rezoned, and the rezoning will inure to the economic benefit of the applicant. And so, that is sort of a strike that you would place against the applicant and, with respect to the zoning. But that's only one piece of the test. The second piece is whether or not there is a reasonable basis for the town to act to rezone the property based on a combination of factors, one of which is that the, that the property has historically been treated differently than the other properties within the district. Historically, the town's fire department and the, and Mr. Coulter's property have been treated differently. They were both town-owned at the time, in 1938, when zoning was. In proximity to this site, other than the town's fire station, has been operated solely as a single-family residence under the Residence A zoning. A number of the lots are substandard in terms of size, they are grandfathered for size by reason of the fact that there were lots pre-existing in 1938. For example, Mr. Moody, who's next door here, has a 10,000-square-foot lot. This lot is less than, less than 40,000 square feet. Mr. Coulter's property itself is 38,000 square feet. Lots across the street are smaller, so a number of the lots are, are subs, are undersized. I think what's unique about the property is that it is located on a state highway. It is next door to a town facility. It is, and it is well-located for the purpose for which it serves, which is a, a business district. Obviously, it's not for this, the more specific discussion here, but more generally, the town really, you know, we've got a lot of properties like this in town. And I think the strength and the, and the ability of these town, of the, of these lots to operate, whether by special permit, by variance, or otherwise, really goes to the depth and the strength of the, the property owner's relationship with his or her neighbors and abutters. At the end of the day, in my view, zoning and zoning-related matters are personal and are specifically local, and they're local to the immediate concerns of the abutters. Sure, the town has, obviously has broader interests in assuring that like properties are zoned and zoning is comprehensive and makes sense in different locations. But at the end of the day, we live in neighborhoods, and neighborhoods either work or they don't. And when they don't, efforts to change zoning, efforts to secure permits fail. To do something that's out of the ordinary, they fail, because people aren't able to get to yes. But in this case, the significant support that was generated from the neighborhood and which drove the process of preparing and submitting the citizen's petition in this matter was really compelling. And in my view, I think the combination of that, the specific nature of this zoning, which is a special permit-based zoning, it is a, it would create a planned unit development for landscape and residential, recognizing that landscape has, has been operated. There was some suggestion in the, the notes from the, the history that I give you as you go through, there are quotations in it. Those quotations come from findings of fact and/or quotes otherwise rendered by the land court in its decision. So, it is interesting that the, in the history, gentleman named Fleming owned it from the 60s until the 80s, when he passed away. It was conveyed by the estate to his nephew, who operated it for a couple of years under a permit that was granted to him. He sold the lot to a guy named O'Connor under, a realty trust. The land court notes that there was some indication that O'Connor operated for, from a construction and landscape business. There are no, there were no permits granted, there's no history of permits, haven't been granted, but there's some least recognition in the court and reading from prior decisions and permits granted by the Board of Appeals, that there was a, a commercial use there. And we, we understand that it, that it may not have been occupied as a residence at the time. Mr. O'Connor ran into economic difficulty, deeded the property to a, a trust that was established to take title on behalf of the FDIC as a part of a foreclosure process. And Mr. Coulter and his father purchased the property together in 1991. It's since been conveyed to Tom and his wife, who own the property, and Coulter Landscaping Incorporated operates the business. So, yes, the zoning is substantially unique to this location. It does provide for a special permit under conditions that substantially track the conditions that are contained in variance decisions and special permits granted by the Board of Appeals. And they are conditions that Mr. Coulter is obviously comfortable in working under. It's interesting that before the Board of Appeals in July, Mr. Prondak, who was present, suggested that it was remarkable and in every time he's ever been to the site, how clean, how neat, how well-maintained the site is. And I think that's a, that's a testimony and credit to the quality of the, the operation that Mr. Coulter runs. So, yes, at the end of the day, spot zoning could be an issue, but I'm pretty confident as I review the law and as I understand the facts in this case, that spot zoning will be successful in opposing a spot zoning issue if that issue should arise. But I would urge the, the board to consider favorably the application that has been submitted, really by Tom's direct abutters, his close friends and abutters, who are, have put this before, willing to put this with their signatures before this, the town and the town meeting for its consideration. With that, I'll turn it over. Any questions? Happy to answer questions, and I know that others are coming in and would be happy to speak as well.
All right, sir. I'll see ya. All right, I have a question. Why didn't they get a permanent variance? What are these temporary variances?
Well, they sought a permanent variance, and I think were granted a permanent variance in 2009, but it was appealed.
No, in 1991, why didn't they get a permanent variance?
I don't know.
Well, I, I mean, what does he say?
In 91, we didn't know we needed a permit. We were told by our attorney at the time when we bought the property, that we could run a landscaping business, would be in conjunction with the florist business. We were unaware of it until the acting building commissioner addressed it, we were selling Christmas trees in 93. And in 94, I came before the zoning board and got my permits for the landscape business.
Right. But what were these, why didn't you get a variance for the, for the business in 93 before the, do you know?
We didn't get it prior to 93.
Well, in 93, presumably, if you'd asked for a variance, you might have gotten it. But what happened? Well, your attorney said you don't need a variance, you can do a special permit? I mean, why was there a temporary variance?
Like I said, it was just through the town, through the zoning board at that time.
I mean, this, what you're asking for here isn't temporary, this is permanent. And I just don't understand why in 93, they gave you a temporary variance rather than a permanent variance.
I think all we can, all we can speak to is the advice that he got at the time was that a special permit would be sufficient.
But he got a variance, so you, didn't he get temporary variance as well?
They seized a permanent variance in 19, in 2009, but that variance was overturned by the.
In 96, there was a temporary variance. And I just, you know, it seems to me the Board of Appeals, for some reason, didn't grant a permanent variance, and you're here now asking for what amounts to a permanent variance for this, for this site?
We are, we are asking what amounts to a special permit, a, a change in the zoning that would allow this board to grant a special permit, as long as the, the permit, the perma te divides by the conditions contained in the permit. It would be a permit to operate a landscape business, and permits are only granted when you can establish that what you're proposing to do is acceptable to neighbors and abutters. If Mr. Coulter would cease to operate the, the landscape business, or if he ceased to live at the property, then the special permit would, would be vacated by his terms, because the zoning requires both the occupancy of the, of the residence and the operation of the business at the same location. Presumably, a new, somebody else in the future could reapply where that, where the property and the business sold. Let's say a son or somebody else, but they would have to reapply for a permit that would apply specifically to their occupancy and operation. It's not a variance which would run with the land or a zoning change that would run specifically with the land and allow, allow just anybody to operate a landscape business if they weren't living in the residence, or the residence to do something else. It is, it is, it is an overlay with specific, specific special permit characteristics. It is not simply a change in zoning.
But it is an overlay for use.
Correct.
Which is to operate a land. Do we have any other special permit provisions for uses?
We do, we have special permit.
Does the Planning Board have, I, I don't remember doing a special permit for a use.
You have.
I mean, we usually do special permits for. I mean, we usually do special permits for buildings, not uses.
Well, we require a use in the Central Avenue Overlay District. We require that the buildings be a mixture of residential and commercial.
We do.
You do?
But we don't get down to details. I mean, for instance, we recall-
I think we did actually, I'd have to look it up, but I thought we did actually prohibit certain uses.
There are certain uses prohibited. But, I mean, I remember the Thomases had a mulch problem. The mulch was on the neighbor's lot line, and we had a terrible problem, because they came to us and they said, "This is your baby, and you've got to fix it." And we did fix it, but it took about five meetings, and I must say, I don't relish doing that again. And this is just an invitation for us to get involved into mulches and parking and running trucks, and it seems to me this is something, my own feeling is, this is something the Board of Appeals should be doing.
We are happy to consider recommendations for technical amendments of that type, if the Board feels that it would be more appropriate for the Board of Appeals, rather than the planning board to be the special permit granting authority, that would be an acceptable amendment, I'm sure would be acceptable to the signatories on the citizen's petition.
Okay, other questions?
Ned, Tom, most landscapers, in the nick of time, they're not basking in the tropics, they are plowing snow.
Correct.
Do you do that?
Yes, I do.
How many employees do you have?
Fifteen. I actually plow for the town, two pieces go on the town in Milton.
Where are those pieces, at the end of the day, where do they grow up, here to the site here?
They're parked in the site in the garage, correct.
In the garage?
In the garage, most of them. In the summertime, my trailers are in the garage, and trucks are out. In the wintertime, the trailers are parked behind the garage, and the trucks are parked inside.
How many trucks do you have?
I have eleven vehicles altogether.
Eleven vehicles.
Five dump trucks and two pickups.
And they all fit in the site?
Yes, they do, sir.
They all fit in the garage?
No, they don't, not all. There's a overhang I put a pickup truck on, but most of your vehicles are parked right adjacent to the garage.
Do we have a requirement in the zoning that commercial vehicles should be garaged?
We do.
Yeah, and actually, 6C would require that trucks, trailers, and related equipment should be housed in the garage of this particular zoning.
Right. So that would mean that it would be a bigger garage?
Do you have plans to expand the garage for your equipment? How will you handle succeeding, succeeding this zoning? Your proposal requires that the trucks, trailers, and related equipment will be housed in the garage.
Truck trailer and constant, in the detachment. Well, parked in the site too, so everyone's parked on the site as well in the area. That's with, what, the 2009? This bends where I put the mulch, directly behind the vehicles. With a temporary structure. Yeah, they has the capacity to store vehicles in the covered.
All of the vehicles in the covered.
Tom, is, do you do anywhere for Curry College?
Do I? No, I don't.
You do work for the town, Snowplow?
Just Snowplow, sir.
There's no parking requirement. How many, you've got sixteen employees?
Correct.
Fifteen, so that presumably would be fifteen cars.
They park in the rear of the property as well, in the front parking lot. Christmastime, I do over nine hundred to a thousand trees. People come in the front of the parking lot, drive around to the back, pick up their tree, drive out to the rear of the property, go to the satellites, and go either north or south on 138.
And how would you handle parking for a farmer's market, or selling shrubs or plants or trees, in addition to the employee parking?
It's the same. Farmer's market might be created on the weekends, where we're not really working, not as busy. It's usually Monday through Friday where we're doing our bulk of our work. Weather, limited, obviously.
Well, this says there'll be six parking spaces for the landscaping business, but you've got fifteen cars.
You said we have fifteen cars, we said we need fifteen, six specific parking spaces to support the business. There's other additional area on the site to do adequate parking for other activities.
For the employees of the landscaping business, but that is parking for the landscaping business. That, I mean, this is confusing, if this is simply for customers of the landscaping business.
Most of the guys on carpool as well, so it's not always fifteen cars coming to the site. I mean, I, you have pictures of control. That's looking south to Canton, and small features there, you'll see the rear of the property as well. That gives an idea of the size of the parking lot, in relation to the house. This is Lower Affington, is the rear of the property. Isn't that something from Affington down to Bradley and Lower?
That's a lot of cars for that garage.
Presumably, they're out.
Especially with the same thing.
I mean, they're not going to be parked on the site all the time. At some point, they're going to be out, working.
I understand that.
When you do that.
Too bad you can't buy that lot of the projector, because you could use the space.
Plenty of room on this site for all of the activities that have been taking place.
Well, that, of course, is your view, but if you had more space, then there would be even more room for the activities, because there are a lot of activities that go on on this thirty-six thousand square foot lot.
Absolutely, and there's an adequate space to handle all of it, and I think the testimony of his abutters and the strength of the testimony, you would agree with that.
I think under Section Four, the special permit application, we might want to add, whether it's under G or adding a new subsection J, a parking plan, just so that we can, however you want to do that, but just so that we can see where the parking would be on the site.
Sure. I was assuming that would be part of the site plan, but that could be, certainly can be added.
Tom, do you research nearby locations for off-site parking?
Yeah, it's out of my financial reach. I do do a little parking over at the firehouse engine four. I take care of the plowing in the wintertime, I take care of the lawn, and the guys don't seem to mind at all. We're not in their way, so it actually works out for us.
Other questions by the Board? Okay, who else wants to be heard on this? Yes, sir. Come on up and join the, join the crew.
My name is John Zickwitz. I live at 245 Atherton Street, and I've come here to support Mr. Coulter in his endeavor before you tonight, and I just want to speak about my experience here in the town in developing business properties. As you know, I'm the co-chair of the Milton Village Central Avenue Revitalization Committee, and I think between our committee, planning board, a lot of other agencies in this town, we've worked really hard to try to increase the commercial property where it's viable, and I think we know the struggles that have come with trying to do that. And so it seems like we have a piece of property here that's been commercially run for many, many decades. It works in the neighborhood. If you remember some of the diagrams that Mr. Corcoran put up, if it reverted back to residential, I don't believe, you know, as an architect, that it would work for residential property. If you see the other properties, the residential properties that are at that intersection, all the residences set back pretty far off that street, and the depth of Mr. Coulter's property would not allow residents to be set back that distance, so I don't see how that would be a viable residence. So if you, if this business wasn't allowed to continue here, I'm not sure what would happen to that lot in the future. And I'd hate to see another empty lot get developed in this town that sits empty for years while we battle over how it should be developed and how it could be developed. We have, it's a viable business there, they've been there for twenty-odd years. In my short time in the neighborhood, having any disturbance from the trucks, they're very respectful as they go through our neighborhood. They come up and down Atherton in front of my house in the mornings, and they, you know, it's just normal traffic that goes by. You go to the intersection, it's always clear, they're never blocking anything. We've been there for one Christmas so far, and, you know, I thought it would be pretty crazy around there, and it's not. Everyone pulls into the lot, buys their trees and leaves, and they just do a lot for the town, and I think it works in this neighborhood, and I would like to see them be able to continue there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Suzanne Moot, and I live at 1269 Canton Avenue, which is at the corner of Atherton. And my husband and I have been there since 1979, and I just want, I'm here to support the Coulter Landscaping Business. I also want to reiterate what others have said, and that is that I was stunned, frankly, when I found out it wasn't zoned for commercial, because it's always been a business for as long, for the over thirty years that we've, that we've lived in the neighborhood, and I'd like to reiterate that it is on Route 138, there are some very heavy eighteen-wheelers that come and go on that street. The Coulter Landscaping Business makes no noise by comparison with the heavy trucking on Route 138, or for that matter, as compared with Curry College at some points in time, particularly during football games. So, they are a wonderful neighbor to have, and my husband and I would like to just voice our support.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Heidi Graff, and I live at 245 Atherton. And a couple of points that I wanted to make, that I don't think anyone has really thought of, is the Coulter family is a family. They do live in the house as a residence. The business is operated during daylight hours. If the business was to change, if they had to leave from hardship of going through this process and not be able to continue their business, and another business came in, how could you tell them to only operate during daylight hours?
The building inspector would have a few words.
So, I think what we're looking at is a business that is working during daylight hours with no disruption to the neighborhood. They're bringing in some commercial base to the town, which we all need. I'd like it, I'd like a lot more, and it's a family. Not only that, but if they do indeed have fifteen employees, and they do, taking that business away is also a hardship for fifteen other families. So you're, in a sense, affecting sixteen families and their livelihood, and I think that should be also taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thanks. Now, Mr. Corcoran, how is this property taxed? Is it taxed commercial?
I think it's mixed-use property, so I guess it's just at, on the regular tax rate as a residential property, I would imagine.
Well, you should know, you pay the bill.
Yeah, it's a little higher, but not to where it would be granted.
So it isn't taxed as commercial?
Correct.
Okay. Yes?
The former speaker said it's daylight hours. So at night in the snowstorm, are you out working?
Correct.
So trucks do come in and out?
After an eight-hour period, guys need a break or something to that effect. And I need to make a correction, I have eleven pieces of equipment, but I have two pickup trucks and four dump trucks.
Thank you.
So it's six commercial trucks.
Do gasoline store on the site?
For the lawnmowers, only.
A small amount.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Can I speak?
Yes.
Thank you, great. Hi, my name's Bill Blumenreich, and I live at 90 Bradley Road in Milton, and I just wanted to speak in favor of the Coulters. First of all, I want to thank all of you for the time you put in serving us. I can't tell you how much I appreciate it as a citizen, but these are nice people. They run a nice business. I live a half a block away. They do my landscaping, they do a great job, they're wonderful people, and it broke my heart a week ago when I heard the problem they were having just because of one neighbor. And I would just beg of you to give them the relief they need to stay there. I mean, like the last lady said, Canton Avenue is pretty commercial as it is. To me, it's a sensible place.
Blue Hill Avenue.
I'm sorry, Blue Hill Avenue. You're right, Blue Hill Avenue, I'm sorry. But anyway, I go through that intersection all the time, I never have any problem. They run the business so well, and they're such nice people, so I just ask you, please, help them out, that's all.
All right, yes?
Hello, my name's Eric Edman, I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 11. I can attest to cleanliness of the property. I've been in town for twenty-two years, going back and forth past it to go back and forth to work. The equipment is always in a line, neat, clean. Christmastime, I sell Christmas trees, but there's never any traffic. Curry College will generate far more traffic than Mr. Coulter's landscaping business will ever do. Now, you know I'm not in favor of spot zoning, but this is the one exception.
One spot.
Because this is not changing anything, this is keeping an existing feature. Income for Milton, keeps his family happy, keeps his business going. I strongly urge you to consider doing this.
All right, who else? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Joe Sloan, I live at 55 Concord Ave. I'm not in a butter, but I can certainly attest to all the years that I've lived in Milton, driving past this site twice daily. The neighbors are certainly correct, and just the presentation of the site has always been first-rate, so I would certainly support whatever form of relief would allow Mr. Coulter to continue his business. As a town meeting member, I'm anticipating the kinds of questions that might come up at town meeting, if this were to be presented at town meeting, and I would just ask, as you said earlier, Mr. Whiteside, the question of whether this is the, this is the best form of relief, or whether it would be a Board of Appeals process that would, that would essentially result in the same, the same goal in continuing this business, but I think to the future, and if in some years down the road, if Mr. Coulter is no longer operating his business on this site, and maybe a future owner would want to do things a little bit differently than the way Mr. Coulter does business there. I would wonder if the neighbors and abutters and the residents of Milton would be afforded any more protection by this recommendation of a zoning change or a variance? And I don't know those technicalities, so I put that to you as a question for the future, because that's a question that frequently comes up when there are usage changes proposed or zoning changes proposed, is this may look like the best thing today, but what would it look like some years down the road? And would it be, would it be more or less protected? And would it be, would it be more or less protection for, again, the butters and residents of the town at large in the future if someone suggested an alteration of that usage?
May I?
Well, I will point out that a variance is not available for this particular use because it has nothing to do with the shape or size of the property. It's just not available. So a special permit is about the only way to go.
But it would be, I think your question would be whether it'd be a special permit by the ZBA or a special permit by the planning board, which would be the more protective.
If I could just respond, I think, first of all, you're correct. A variance is not available. A variance was granted and, and was appealed. And the land court overturned the decision to grant the variance basing its decision on the inability to show hardship based on the land. That's been appealed. So we could win that on appeal, but that's a coin toss and in some cases, the coin might have to land on its side in order to win that. But having said that, it is a not, so a variance would run with the land. If a variance was granted, then it would be run into the future with the land and it would follow conveyances of land from one owner to the other. This is a special permit process that would be allowed under zoning change that would grant the special permit to the current owner of both the residence and the business. If a future owner sought to do something different, he would be required to seek a separate, such special permit either under, still arguing that he was, she would be allowed to do what is authorized under this zoning or separately because he could, he or she could argue that some other use would be available under the special permit processes that currently exist under the town's bylaw. And it could, could be granted a special permit. There are some other uses that are allowed under the town's bylaw by special permit. But those, again, are specific to the owner of the business. So this variance would allow the permit process to exist in perpetuity, but the permit process itself would be applicable to the specific applicant and would only be in place for as long as the applicant abide by the conditions in the zoning and obviously the conditions identified in special permit.
And that's true whether it's a ZBA special permit or a planning board special permit?
Yes. I think that, I have a, I'm ambivalent on which body should be the special permitting authority. I think in terms of zoning changes and permits relating to zoning changes, that the planning board as an elected body is a more appropriate body for that purpose. But whether it's the ZBA which is appointed or whether it's the planning board that's elected, at the end of the day, you each have to follow the same process, the same rules. Your permits are for the same.
I would say that the planning board issues much tighter special permits than the ZBA does. And I don't think that there's any question about that.
I can only speak to the permits that have been issued for clients of mine on both sides and they're both pretty good.
I think we need to diss the ZBA.
That was, that was just an observation, that was not a dissing.
Al, quick question, this would be like an overlay.
This would, this would be like an overlay. But it's, it's just zoning this lot, so it would be an overlay of the lot, which would be residential with this overlay on it. But I think that we should ask Mr. Flynn because we clearly have a case where if you run a business and it's a good business and you've got a lot of support in the neighborhood and no complaints and, what?
There's historical precedent on this particular lot for this particular use?
Well, it initially was a contracting business and it became,
But it has been consistently.
In ninety-one, it became a landscaping business.
But it has been consistently a mixed commercial residential.
Except when it was a school. And initially, it may have been a residence and then he moved the greenhouse, or maybe he did it all at once.
Did it all at once. Nineteen sixty-three, he did it all at once.
Okay. In any event, I think that we should ask Mr. Flynn about this.
Are we asking Mr. Flynn if we are in a position to vote on this amendment?
No, we, we recommend to the town meeting what we think the town meeting should do. And if the town meeting thinks that, you know, don't like what we recommend, it doesn't, it doesn't make any difference. But it does seem to me to make an informed recommendation, we should know whether this is spot zoning because if it is spot zoning, we as the planning board should be able to identify it.
I thought, I thought from what I've heard so far that there was little question that it is spot zoning.
Well, I, whether it's, it's, it's.
You want no question?
Justifiable.
Justifiable spot zoning.
Wait, wait, is it, is, where does Mr. Flynn agree on that? Isn't that up to us?
Well, there are standards that, that we have to apply. It isn't just a grab bag. Yes.
Ned, Mr. Corcoran, are you hoping to have this on for the October town meeting?
Yes.
It is on.
It is on.
It's already on, yes.
The board, the, we filed it in time for it to be put on the October twenty-two town meeting and the board of selectmen voted to support the.
I haven't seen that, but does it say planning board?
No.
No, because it's a citizen's.
Citizen's petition.
Phil, do you know the warrant committee's deadline for going to press? If not, I know somebody I can ask.
I know somebody who we can ask. I do believe it's the twenty-first. Twenty-first.
Twenty-first? Twenty-second for going to press?
No, it's the twenty-first.
So twenty-first.
He's answering a different question.
Yeah, exactly. So September twenty-first, the warrant committee is going to press.
Yeah.
Will we be able to have a recommendation by September twenty-first?
I don't know, I, I certainly, I, I think I can do my own research on spot zoning, but it would be, I mean, the board might as well, I mean, Ned could submit a brief on spot zoning. There is a, a case that the appeals court just determined in Cambridge, but it's a Rule 126 case, which I think means it doesn't have any presidential value. Harrington versus City of Cambridge.
Earlier, Alex, you were talking about the fact that the zoning, the planning board doesn't, in order for it to report its zone usage.
No, we zone it, but we, we generally don't do special permits controlling uses. Our uses, I mean, it's usually a building and, and the use of the building may go along with, but we usually are doing a building. But I, I mean, we can do a use, it's not, we're nimble people.
Are we talking about a use or are we talking about the assisted living?
No, we're talking about a building as much as anything.
But the building is required to have a specific use.
Exactly.
You have a very good point.
Exactly.
So how, how, how does this differ?
I retract everything I said.
Okay. Let me ask another question then, and you being the chairman, I'm sure you can educate me. How does this differ from the assisted living? In fact, isn't that spot zoning?
Mr. Coulter, if he acquired five acres on the corner of Atherton Street, could, using this zoning, could open an assisted living facility, could ask for a special permit for assisted living facility. In fact, anyone at a stoplight on Route 28, but that's, you see, that's not spot zoning because it applies to lots of spots.
Well, couldn't, couldn't you say the same thing here? I mean, he's been.
No, 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 this applies only to one lot and that's Mr. Coulter's lot.
And maybe Mr. Corcoran should, should work on tailoring it around this lot as was done with the assisted living, but still leave the door open somewhat. Very little.
Well, you see, the thing is that, that having a lot of illegal businesses, this particular business has had all these special permits and variances and so it has had the trappings of legality. Whereas a lot of businesses that are operated just do so without bothering. And, and so we don't, this is sort of a special case, but it's not.
It's certainly, it is conceivable that it would be applicable to other lots.
I, I, I understand, I mean, you've made it very, very, very specific. It would, it's conceivable, it's very thinly conceivable.
But it's possible that it could be.
But it's possible, you could, it's possible if, you know.
No, I mean, reading it.
I mean, it's possible that the zoning for the assisted living could only happen on the lot that's happening. I'm sure we could find some other locations, it's possible.
Well, no, but, but there are other locations because land acquisition is, is permitted. And they can, it applies in other locations, no question about it.
Yeah, there's actually two differences in thinking about it between the two. One is that, as Alex pointed out, for the assisted living, you can acquire land in order to meet it. And this is restricted to lots that are already in common ownership at the time of, actually since January nineteen ninety-two. The other difference is with this one, we're dealing with an existing business that's already on the site. With the assisted living, we're allowing a new business on a site that has not previously had that same use. It has been a business use, but it hasn't had that same use.
I see, per, per, under Section 1 Purpose Site, I can see, wait, I can see your point, yes.
But the, you know, so those are two differences between them.
All right, so board, what do you want to do? I want to ask town council about spot zoning. But the warrant committee wants to go to press.
Well, not so much once, they kind of have to.
The warrant committee is going to go to press, but they can always type up a multicolored sheet.
Well, the question.
Again, again, lead me a little bit, what is it that you want to know about spot zoning from your attorney?
I want to know if this is, this is spot zoning which, which passes the lab test. In other words, if you break out laughing when you say this is justifiable spot zoning, that would not pass the lab test. Whereas if you can make a presentable argument, then presumably that argument should be made for the town meeting and we can make our recommendation accordingly. But I, I don't think if we know nothing about spot zoning, we should be recommending spot zoned.
I can, I can give you some general discussion now.
We'd sort of like to read the cases.
Understood. Sturgis versus Town of Chilmark, three eighty Mass., two forty-six. Municipality does not bear the burden of proving that zoning amendment was reasonable but need only bring forward some indication that the zoning provision has some reasonable prospect of a tangible benefit to the community. Local legis, this is Randolph versus Town of North Attleboro. Local legislative body may adopt a zoning amendment to further a particular project that benefits a landowner or developer if the amendment also serves the public welfare upholding rezoning to enable an individual to construct a shopping mall and a multi-screen movie complex. Woodland Estates versus Building Inspector of Methuen upheld zoning to address, create a hospital district where there was a hospital already in town. Raymond versus the Building Inspector of Brimfield upheld zoning to keep the town's leading employer from leaving, rechain zoning to reflect the existence of a business so that, so that the business wouldn't leave town. So the notion of spot zoning, the starting point is if it's designed to benefit, economically benefit the particular landowner, then that's a check against. But beyond that, if there's a reasonable basis to, to change the zoning because there's some tangible benefit to the town, however that is described, then that shifts the burden completely and overwhelmingly to the, to the, to the party that's challenging the zoning as illegal spot zoning. Because it's a legislative function, town meeting has a reasonable right to make legislative decisions for the benefit of the town. And in this case, you're preserving an existing business, you're preserving an existing corner, an important intersection in the town, and you're doing it in a reasonable fashion. In this case, you're not completely changing the zoning. You're allowing a special permit process that requires that the property continue to be operated in certain conditions. And it doesn't perpetuity, perpetuity change zoning. So it broader, it has greater protection in the process than, than a standard, simple zoning change. So that's, I'm happy to give you, you know, a short memo.
I, I, I mean, we can read the cases, but I think that we should read the cases for those who want to read them. I mean, for those who don't care, they don't have to read the cases.
The cases that you stated, I, I just found interesting that it seemed as though the hospital case and the case where they wanted to retain the business of town, it really, what it did is help maintain the status quo.
Okay, anyone else?
It's taken me a while to speak here, my name is Michael Call.
Why don't you come up to the, come up to the table, speak into my phone.
Whether I speak the right words or not, I really don't care at this point in time. Relax, man. I'm here with my brother, Tom, where are you, Tommy? There you go, my brother Mike.
Have you been produced yourself?
And my dad. We've been cutting lawns out here for a lot of years. This is a bunch of alone. The overlay and all that is not going to impact anything. My brother has run an honorable business for years, as we all have. I'm proud to be a Coulter. I'm proud to have my brother here with me. I'm proud to have my father here with me. Proud to have my brother Mike. Enough is enough. We've been taught to do the job right or not do it at all. We've never given harm to this community, this township called Milton. This township who holds sargento over state government. We know it's an honor to work in this town. We're in a privilege and we do it well. Your vote is all important to us as a family. More importantly, it's important to this town. You said enough. Made a fool of myself, didn't I? You did not, you did well.
Okay, anyone else?
Hi, my name is Dan Flynn, tool on the Dundee Lane.
What did he?
I just wanted to go on the record in support of this permit, whatever function, whether it's planning board, zoning board, whatever it is, for a number of reasons. Number one, it's been pointed out rather passionately by Tom's brother, the legacy this family has in the town. It's a great business, it's a great location for business. It's been, in my estimate, an easy one to probably look at the grandfather clause. I don't understand the legalities, but I'd like to see this resolved in a timely fashion. I'm a client of Tom's, but I'm a friend of Tom's and he does a great job and he's a great citizen. One thing you don't see is some of the charities, Coulter Landscape, donates their services and some of their products. They're a big part of the community. It would be a shame to have them move one way or another. So whatever you do, would like to see.
We're making a recommendation and the matter will be determined at the town meeting in October. And it isn't going to be determined here tonight. It's going to be determined at the town meeting in October. And if there are passionate speeches, they will undoubtedly carry weight.
Good. Thank you very much for your attention and your time.
But, yes, the matter will be determined at town meeting in October, but our recommendation will have weight, both with the warrant committee and with the town meeting. And it would be nice to know if we were going to be able to have that recommendation available prior to the warrant committee going to press, so that's actually going to warrant.
It would indeed.
So my question is, are we going to be able to get a recommendation to town meeting, to the warrant committee by September twenty-first?
I don't know, what does the board think? What does the board want to do?
Is it possible that we can vote to move on this recommendation?
You certainly can.
I, I, I want to complete what I said. With the understanding that if a town council looks at it and says that, that this is disallowed for some reason under spot zoning, that we would rescind it? I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying to hold your, I'm trying to hold your request.
I suppose so, but I mean, it would, it would be sort of silly telling the warrant committee, well, it's spot zoning. "Well, it's spot zoning. We don't know anything about spot zoning, and therefore we've recommended approval." It seems to me that that would be not helpful to the warrant committee.
We could give an indication to the warrant committee that we are generally in favor of this, if that is in fact the case, but that we are checking up on the legal issues surrounding spot zoning that might give them enough information to go forward with in their initial round of discussions. And then you, as chair, will report to the warrant committee, because I'm sure they'll be asking you to meet with them.
You say it. My bad. I do only.
I'm just backing you up.
Thank you.
Okay. So, what do you want to do, Ed?
I would say vote on it tonight, and so we can have it for the warrant. And have Jonathan give us some guidance in between now and then. Simple as that to me.
All right. Why don't you make a vote?
I move, Mr. Chairman, that we approve this.
I've got to say that this article has, is, has any number of, has issues in what it says. Issues which need to be fixed, and we haven't gotten into them. And we're not going to get into them because we're currently running behind schedule.
Are they fixable issues?
They're undoubtedly fixable issues.
Are they ones that would be possible for the planning boards to come up with as a revised recommendation?
Suppose so.
There are minor technical issues as opposed to major substantive ones.
No, there are no substantive issues. I mean, the substantive issue is whether it's spot zoning, whether it's illegal spot zoning. And that's the issue. If it isn't, then it can be made tighter.
I think, again, that we've all come to, kind of more or less come to the same point. And that is, we can vote on this in the affirmative or the negative, and move forward with that. In fact, at some point, it's illegal spot zoning, and that kind of nullifies the situation.
The idea, though, of having to fix some technical issues is going to be problematic. But the warrant committee needs to get that to town meeting somehow, and we won't get those sorted tonight. So what we could potentially do is vote general support. That way, again, they know, everybody knows the general support, and then subject to a final recommendation with the actual language coming from us at the next meeting that we have. That could work procedurally.
Again, on the timetable, would that in fact get it in time to get to the warrant committee?
Well, since we're going to have to do another meeting on Hillside, probably next week, we could meet next week and discuss the technical, I mean, we could discuss the technical issues at that same meeting next week. And that would get it into the warrant committee in time, rather than make waiting call our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah, but that doesn't give me time to do the work I have to do. A week for a lawyer is nothing.
Get that on tape.
I don't think you meant that. Nothing. You're thinking.
Okay. You know, I hear what you're saying. I want to get, I want to get some input on spot zoning, and I want to do some work on the details here. And I don't, I'm not going to do it for next Wednesday. It's just, I'm not going to do it.
What is the timetable to get it in for the warrant committee? September 21st?
September 21st, so.
But as you just said, you're giving general support to the citizen petition. And you will have a revised recommendation.
Before the 21st?
No.
No, but you know what? Actually, that can work because what they can put in is whatever comment they want to put in and whatever recommendation they want to put in. But in the comments, they can inform town meeting that we'll have the revised recommendation with the technical items. That could work. So, there could still be, even if there's not a full recommendation in the warrant, there would at least be sufficient information for town meeting to understand what's going on. That could work. And then you have more than a week.
I am going to have more than a week. What you want to do is you want to give a recommendation of general support. You move that the planning board issue a recommendation of general support to this proposed article. That's what you're, that's what he's doing, right?
That would reflect in the vote.
Right?
Yeah, I would say so. A recommendation that the planning board is in general support of this article, so that the warrant committee and the proponents both know that we're in support and that it is subject to some technical revisions in our final recommendation and checking on the issue of the legality of the spot zoning. So that's the full motion.
Well, I have to change those. Well, okay. That's fine. I'm going to abstain on it just because I want to, I want to know about the spot zoning before I decide what to do. But all, we've got the motion. Do we have a second?
Do we have a second?
Where's the motion?
I just made it.
I have one more question before you.
It had a lot of time.
And again, I'm asking you to educate me on this. Mr. Colter, how's my driveway?
Yeah.
Does that preclude?
I think that precludes you.
Does it? Does he receive an economic benefit if he's paying for it?
Yeah, I don't get no improvement.
I don't. It seems to me you should have, you should not participate if he claims to crouch your driveway.
That's going to leave us with a tied vote if you abstain.
No, it's not. I'm abstaining. It's but if, presumably, it'd be a two.
No, two zero zero. No, it's two zero zero because they're both abstaining, so.
Right. Two zero two.
All right. Eddie, I move that we have a motion of general support in favor of this article to go to the warrant committee and to the opponent and that we let the warrant committee know that the planning board will follow up with a specific recommendation that gives the technical changes that we would like to make.
Now, wait a minute. Maybe we should do, maybe we should do it because if it's a two to two with a four-person board, the motion would fail.
Not if it's two extensions.
If you put it in the negative.
Oh, no.
Okay, go ahead.
It's two extensions.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay. It's two zero two. The motion counts.
Yes, because it's not negative.
Two zero two, one absent.
No. Two.
Two extensions. No.
Two zero one absent.
You don't count the absent.
Okay. And we're going to postpone the assisted living. Okay, all in. Do we have a motion?
Did anybody want to speak after reading it?
Anyone else want to speak on assisted living?
May I ask one last question relative to this? Will the board be, will be coming back at some point to consider its technical amendments?
We'll probably have to continue that hearing.
Continuation of the hearing to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
To our next meeting, regular scheduled meeting, which is October.
Two weeks.
Can I ask for October 11th?
October 11th? No. Because we want to get these things to the warrant committee, and the town meeting will have, it's too close to the town meeting.
All right. So, September 27th at 6:45?
Yes. We don't have anything else for September 27th yet.
Okay. Yes.
One last point, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Could we ask the audience, when they leave the room, to please go upstairs and take the conversations outside? Because otherwise, there's so many, we can't do business in here to stay up their time. Thank you.
All right.
Assisted living.
We're going, well, we're going to just, we're going to announce again that the, Mr. Lynch's wife is in the hospital, and therefore, Mr. Lynch is not here. So, he's not going to be able to participate in the open space development off Hillside Street. And I am not able to participate in the open space development off Hillside Street. And we need a four-person board to do so. And accordingly, we're not going to be able to hear it tonight.
But we will discuss scheduling for the next.
We will discuss scheduling. It would be, yes. We will discuss scheduling.
So you will hear that next week, open space?
We will discuss scheduling. There are some people who want to do it next week.
So we'll know by the end of the meeting when we're going to hear it. Assisted living?
The assisted living. Anyone else want to be heard on it?
At.
Yes, we have one.
Who?
This is the guy.
Welcome. What do you have?
Thank you. Cheryl Tagaya, 660 Kentonav, town meeting member from Precinct 9. I am concerned that this is written, this particular article is written for a particular operator and a particular assisted living model. In my professional work as an architect, I've been involved in the design of some assisted living facilities. And since there's certain things in here that are, make me say that it's written for a particular model, I wonder how it then would, how the town would view another assisted living operator coming in with a different model, and would that require a different assisted living article? So would we address assisted living on an article?
It would require an amendment to this.
An amendment to this? Okay. And.
What?
Why?
Because the building, the model of the building is what you're talking about.
Right, right. Because.
The courtyard design.
Right. The courtyard design is one item. Also, the number of units. There's some new prototypes that are looking at whether there's less units than that. If you have memory care in the type of facility, you're looking at distances between your common areas and your residence that you have a little bit smaller, might be in pods of 12. So I just think it's, it would want to leave it such that you could have different operators who could come in.
But we wanted it to be specific. We didn't want to leave it open to whim.
So.
In other words, if you have another operator who wants something, the way this has been designed is that you're going to have to ask for an amendment to the zoning.
So, where we have commercial as a use, where we are certain types of commercial, where we have certain types of residential as uses in our zoning, we don't get so specific to, in our zoning language generally. So assisted living is a different use than was contemplated in 1938 when uses were first put into zoning. I'm just concerned that we address new uses that come about in the 21st century by writing them for a particular operator and a particular site. So, that's, I think, in not only the courtyard model, the number of units, but also there's some issues about assisted living as a use that we get into some of the building design criteria and looking for pork kosher in particular as a particular requirement, certain types of traditional materials and design features as required, and also interior spaces and dictating noise requirements and other use of materials. Those are some of the things that are dictated in the building code. And also, in the use, the elderly have visual changes which impact levels of lighting, changes in texture and changes in color. And it seems to me that by dictating some of the interior design by the building commissioner, that it leaves itself open to some question. And those might be better suited to be addressed in the building code rather than the zoning code.
If you look at P, though, under the design guidelines, that specifically allows for flexibility. That's an alternative compliance clause that allows the, so that's on page five.
Okay. We didn't miss that. Okay.
Says, "If an applicant shall propose a design treatment which is consistent with the intent of these design guidelines, which is inconsistent with one or more specific guidelines, but which contributes to a better design for good cause, the planning board may allow modification of one or more guidelines so as to achieve such a better design that would exist without such modification." Basically says, "If you're coming up with something that is better than what we have here, we're allowed to consider it." It's something that had been missing from certain other zoning that we've done, and this gives us a little bit more flexibility to address precisely what you're saying.
But not undue flexibility. We don't want undue flexibility.
Right. It has to be better. And in general, you have to both have both the planning board, and I thought that was in there, maybe shut down.
The board has to apply rather than to grab stuff out of the ether.
Generally, the planning board and the applicant must both agree. And that seems to have been removed from this particular outline. It should have been in there.
Well, as, I guess, who will be the judge of what is the appropriate resistance to noise of adjoining units?
The planning board. But the building inspector, the planning board might well say, "The building inspector, make sure you don't have those paper-thin walls that a lot of developers put in because it's just, if you don't have the, do the extra to make the walls sound resistant, even if the non-sound resistant walls will comply with the code."
We actually had a complaint from a building that was built in Milton under a planning board's special permit, that it was not sufficiently designed in the interior to deal with noise. And so, these things make their way in.
Into zoning, okay. And if there's a conflict between the zoning code, the zoning article and the building code, which will have jurisdiction?
We would, we would make sure that there wasn't, because building code has to be complied with, and these do too. But we would, if there were a conflict, we would, we would bend the design guideline.
Yeah. I don't think this is specific enough to be in conflict with the building code. To say that, for example, to say that interior spaces shall be designed so units are resistant to noise from adjoining units, that's fairly general. It's just saying that we expect you to actually do this.
Right. But if I brought you a design that said, "Here's my STC rating," and I said that that would meet certain noise criteria for separation between units, there's any number of ways you can achieve different STC ratings. There's different wall designs that you can achieve that way. I guess the question would be, you're going to require someone to come in under zoning and submit their detailed drawings for their partition, demising wall partitions between units?
Or just to say what the, what the construction type will say.
Yeah, we don't know.
I mean, we're not going to ask for construction drawings of the partitions. But we're going to want to know about what they're, what they're going to do. I mean, this is 131 Elliot Street. We definitely, when that, you know, comes, we're going to make sure that those units are sound resistant.
I will say, in my 25 years as a practicing architect designing to meet zoning code, I've never seen these kinds of requirements written so specifically, which are really addressed, better addressed in building codes and in codes that address the particular use, like assisted living. So, I ask you to reconsider whether you really want to put that in there. Some of the other things, which I think are particular to building design, I understand if you could look for an amendment and, and address that. And I think that it's actually better.
It seems to me, we were, we were designing this assisted living bylaw for weeks on end, and here we are at the final, sort of, final hour. And you're making suggestions that, you know, if you'd made these a month and a half ago, we could possibly have done something.
Cheryl did give those to me. I gave them to you, and you had the same opinion then as you have now.
What?
And I said it should have been the building code, and you said, "No, it needs to be the permit."
Okay. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your thought.
But you also made a point earlier that if this says, you know, sound resistance for the petition wall, that there's still, there's still a building code for a petition. I mean, so you already made the point that the zoning, the building code will still be in place.
Oh, absolutely.
This is more of a general comment.
I mean, what you're saying is to wrench the guts of this and not fire a courtyard building.
No, we can just say, may. We can say, there may be a courtyard.
But you, but.
If we sign thousand square feet, we don't have to say a shop.
If you say there may be, you have wrenched the guts out of that, and I will vote against it.
But you, but you, you pointed earlier about. But you, but you, you, you pointed earlier about paragraph P. In fact, you, you could change the design if you were to show that it was more beneficial.
Paragraph P is, paragraph P is design guidelines only. The courtyard is under common area space, and I'm not sure that paragraph P would apply to that because it's some special. It'd be worth an argument, but I don't know, I don't know how that part would be interpreted.
Maybe we can add as paragraph P for that section as well. If you come up with a scheme that you are designing that was that much better, it would certainly be.
It seems to me if you want alternative designs, we should know what the alternative designs are.
Well, I mean, there's, there's an unlimited number of alternative designs.
I stand there are, and some are good, some are not good. And you know the problem we've had with 131 Elliot is people said this is a.
It's not specific enough.
This is beautiful, and other people say it's not beautiful, and it's not, we should have zoned.
On the number of designs.
But you also said there that it didn't meet certain codes.
But all I'm saying is that the less specific you get, the less you're going to get, the less you know what you're going to get. Because the architect will simply say, you know, you people aren't architects, what are you doing telling me what my business should be?
Well, no, I, I, I more or less agree with what you're saying. I, I think this is fine. I think it has enough flexibility to make combinations to something that may be seen as bad.
I think that, I mean, this is the best we could do. The best I could do.
On the units, is there a reason for having no less than 60?
Yeah, because that was, there was apparently another operator who said, I want to do 60 units, who didn't complain about the courtyard.
Just wondering if we change it to have no more than 100 units.
I think that we could take out the 60 units.
Okay.
As long as it's got a courtyard.
No more than 100 units and leave the courtyard.
All right.
Do we have to define the number of square feet in the courtyard? I just asked.
I, I, I don't know, do we?
We have, there shall be a courtyard with at least 8,000 square feet, then we, can we just, can we just have there shall be a courtyard?
I'm starting to get pictures of 131 Elliot Street again, and we say we don't want to, you know, meaning that I think you do want to.
Define the number of square feet.
Otherwise, one man's courtyard might be another man's.
Well, we, we, exactly, but.
But it, okay, it's 8,000 square feet, the, all right. So our modification, our only modification is under two, and ALRD shall have no more than 100 units.
Okay. You have, you're looking as though you're about to spring, Bill.
Are you? Is that a bad modification, you're not happy? Okay.
What do you say?
Okay. Bernie won't be here.
Okay.
All right. One step over.
Okay, but I, that's what I am now.
Yes, I know, consistent, you're consistent.
Okay.
Confirm it.
Now, anyone else want to be heard on this article? All right, now we're going to, we, with, we're going to accept a motion to recommend approval of this article with the striking of the minimum number of units.
Yes.
And that is your motion, everyone.
That is my motion.
And.
My second.
All right, further discussion. All in favor? Aye. Well.
Excellent.
This I think is yours, but 333 Hillside Street. As everyone is aware, I hope, the open space development off Hillside Street scheduled for 8:45 won't be heard tonight, but we're going to discuss scheduling after when it will be heard. 333 Hillside Street.
Yes. I think Bill's gone to get them.
333 Hillside Street, come up to the table, Mr. Bosworth.
Good evening.
All right.
Good evening.
My name is Jim Burke, I'm here with Charlie Bosworth tonight to discuss 333 Hillside Street, and I'm having issues with this one. We're looking at a 81Y subdivision and a single house lot on an existing lot that's been in existence for a bit. And I'm sure a number of you are familiar with the project. We submitted it for preliminary earlier. And it had a, basically a 50-foot layout with a, I'm sorry. Had a 50-foot layout. With a culvert sack on the end. Wow, that's. It has since been revised to include, basically use an existing drive that provides access to a number of lots off that right-of-way. The land itself, shown behind me, is a wooded parcel, about 93,000 square feet. There's a paved driveway that services one lot. From this location here, the drive extends past the gate as a gravel, gravelway, and swings onto my client's property over some wetlands. What we're proposing to do. Basically build one single family home on an existing lot and kind of repave the, the existing access drive through, through the right-of-way. We're providing stormwater controls as well as a new water main. Overhead power services the lot down there, we're proposing to go underground at one point and bring that power onto the lot as well. There's a turnaround, as requested during the preliminary hearing, I believe it's 20 by, 20 by 40, a hammerhead turnaround and with appropriate guardrails and protection for, for vehicles. It's paved at this time and proposed to be paved at this time. The, the stormwater is, the roadway itself is super elevated, so the one side is higher than the other, so it pitches the stormwater to a swale in this location, and a water quality tank picks up the stormwater and removes the sediment, better than a catch basin would do, and releases it to an existing culvert that is right here, where the wetlands are shown. The wetlands were redelineated by Ecotec, and we recently picked them up, so it's an accurate delineation, or we'll be going to the conservation commission subsequent to the planning board. But it's very similar to the wetlands delineation previously, slight alterations, but given the timeframe of the earlier delineation, I thought it was wise to, to do it again.
You have a 16-foot roadway, is that right?
It's actually, it's a typo, it's 14, 14.
That's what I was thinking that we talked about.
It was, it was originally 16, only because.
I think 14 is what we were talking about.
And it skinnies down to 12 as soon as it gets past the first driveway.
Okay. Okay, I think that, and we're going to have, there's going to be an easement document about that easement, so that the various people who currently have the right to use the road can use the easement, can use the easement over your property.
The layout plan isn't colored up, but you probably can see that it needs to be a little bit better in this location, it runs, takes a piece out right there. That'll provide the access easement, to allow people to traverse across the property.
Exactly. And so we're going to, obviously, we're going to want, we're going to want, that's going to be a part of your, your submission, I think.
Yeah, it's, actually, it would be in the, the 81Y plan itself that would be recorded.
Okay. All right, well, I think that this is, this looks pretty good to me, but we're going to, we're going to see what, Mr. Clark, you've studied this plan with care, what do you think?
I know that there was one question that came up earlier, and that was by the fire, some of the neighbors had a question before the fire chief. I did discuss it with the fire chief, and there will be a need for more hydrants than the one that's located on the plan. The issue of being able.
More hydrants?
More hydrants, there's one hydrant on this plan currently.
One proposed hydrant.
One proposed hydrant, and the fire chief has three.
He wants two.
Three.
No, he wants three.
Why three?
He wants three.
Why does he want three?
Is it the problem we were running into the other side, where you get that dead end and you can't discharge?
Yes. His, his comment is because there is no looping of the waterline, water flow could be jeopardized without additional backup, thus the additional fire hydrants will be required. There was a question from the neighbors about the ability of fire trucks to be able to turn around on that road. And the fire chief came back and said, I have no issues with the fire truck turning around. One, he can turn around within the, he can turn a pumper around within the hammerhead, and he'll use the driveway for the ladder truck. The driveway is most likely with, if the house is in the proposed location as on the plan, there's an arrow that says proposed easement. That's actually pretty much the same direction of the existing driveway. The ladder truck would not be going down to the hammerhead to do anything.
Right, unless there were a cat in the tray.
Okay. Cats, huh?
I think one's.
All right, what else? That's it?
That's it.
I'd like to speak if I could.
Yes.
Can I address the things? I mean, three, I mean, there's one at the top, I can see, I mean, three just seems excessive.
Three seems that leaves one to win.
It's a 700-foot long driveway.
I, I just suggest that you use the language that the discussion be held between the DPW director and the fire chief to come up with an appropriate number.
Mr. Bosworth's sitting here telling me to be quiet, because, I mean.
To me, it's another hydrant that needs to be maintained, two hydrants, two hydrants I can see, three hydrants at a 700-foot stand.
I think two hydrants sounds right to me, but how about asking the DPW to get together with the fire chief?
The issue of one is, there is no loop. You put a hose onto the one hydrant, and you need more, you can't grab it from the other side, you need another hydrant. Therefore, they have to go up the street to find another hydrant.
So if they have two, that would be good.
It's a what?
If they have two hydrants, that would solve the problem.
Their comment yesterday was, I suggest to you that you put into your decision that the discussion be had with the DPW director and the fire chief, and let them.
That sounds perfect, that sounds perfect.
That's perfectly reasonable.
Fine. Now, Mr. Sheffield.
I'm Attorney Bob Sheffield, I represent Martin Dean, who, whose house is on this road, in fact, is the owner of the property that the road is going to go over. And he is concerned that he has a culvert there, and, and they are planning to eliminate the culvert. And he is fearful that there'll be erosion from the water that comes down from Forest Street to Highland and down onto this roadway.
Down Forest to Hillside and along Hillside to this. Okay.
Yes.
All right. And what do you think about that?
We had some conversations privately with Mr. Dean, and we look forward to working with him with that, just to, to clear up with regards to how we can help him with the culvert that's in there right now. You could end up putting an arbitz silk swale, a, basically a riprap bowl to take the energy out of the water. The other thing to keep in mind is that, you know, once the water from Hillside Street passes through this culvert, we're pitching our driveway in the other direction. So whatever we're doing is going to be an improvement, even up gradient of, of Mr. Dean's property. So we're, we're controlling all the water that we possibly can control. If we end up having to handle the Hillside Street water, I think a salt trap is probably warranted.
Well, if he has a culvert, which apparently he does, he wants to preserve his culvert.
It's, it's providing stormwater control as we speak. So it's, it's not our intent to change.
Okay, so you don't want to eliminate his culvert?
No, if it's working, I think we probably can make it better.
All right, so what about that, Mr. Sheffield? How does that sound to you?
I'm not an engineer, and I'm just concerned that this roadway going down on my client's property does not, you know, is designed so that it will not create the erosion problem and cause any other problems to my client.
Well, they say it's sort of like one of those banks, that it all slides over to the side away from Mr. Dean.
Yes, it does, I believe that there's a, what, a three-inch.
But, but, but that's, that's how they're designing it, so, and then the culvert will be improved. It sounds, it sounds quite doable, doesn't it?
Okay. I think we can leave the culvert as it is in place, we don't have to move it.
Okay.
It can stay, can stay exactly as it is. That would be my suggestion.
That would be satisfactory, Mr. Dean.
All right, okay, the culvert problem is solved.
Excellent.
Okay, who else wants to be heard on this, ah, Mr. Clark?
Where is the pulpit you talk?
Right at the top of the street, right at the intersection. Yeah, it's, it's actually, it's, unfortunately, it was installed after the survey. And it's, I didn't locate, the only survey that we've done since 2005 has been added to wetlands. The culvert has since been added subsequent to our survey originally, so it's not on the plan. But I've seen it.
Wasn't that, wasn't that in there when the Concombs did this originally, back in?
No, no, the, the Concombs had, it came up with Concombs because it was.
I remember voting on it, that's why I'm asking a question. Installed without approval. Okay.
We're, we're looking to, to make a.
You're going to improve it.
Yeah, a situation that's solving one problem, we're going to improve it.
Done.
All right, who else wants to be heard on this, this application? If no one, we will continue the hearing because we want the rest of the documents, like the easement document. The easement document.
Well, I mean, from, from my perspective, I mean, this document right here, it has the.
No, but we want, we want, we want, no, I, I mean, you remember that since it does go on to Ms. No, but we want, we want, we want, no, I mean, you remember that since it does go on to Miss Bosworth's property, and there are people who have the right to use the road, they want to be satisfied that they have, their rights have been preserved, even though the road goes along this easement. And so there is an easement document which will grant rights to the current people who can use the roads.
So it's basically a revised deed that references the user's plan.
Right, I mean, the roadway goes, it goes out of its right-of-way, and a new right-of-way is created.
Is that true?
Sure.
Well, we can do a draft.
We can't get a revised deed until the subdivision is approved.
But you can-
It's a separate document, though.
The easement is, is, it says, "You grant easement for construction of a roadway to be used by," and then you describe the rights of the users, who can go over the roadway as it's relocated.
So it's a separate document that goes with the deed. We used it for, we had an easement for one of our other projects, was it 36 Central? Maybe that we could use as, so they could have a-
We have the Loza State.
The Loza State, so we should have something on the files that you can use as an example.
We can mimic the existing easement language as it's written now, which I, which I, which is the intent, is what you're trying to get at?
It's simply-
Is that it's just going to mirror the existing-
Yes, exactly right. It's, the people will have the exact same rights they have to go over the easement as they have to go over the road.
Okay.
All right, well, we need that, what else do we need?
Is there the ability for future development down this road?
I think it was blocked off by conservation restrictions.
And Mr. Dean presumably, Mr. Dean presumably has the right to a house, and we would, we would have, because he has frontage, doesn't he? On the roadway, doesn't he?
Yeah, I mean-
Does he have 200 feet of frontage that he could?
I don't know how many. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure.
He might, he might, but in any event, if he did, the roadway would have to be expanded to 14 feet.
As far as, you know, what happens with regards to people's petitions in the future.
Right, exactly. We're just simply going to, on the plan, make a note that additional laws will require a 14-foot paved service. And it looks like we're in a line to approve this next time. If you get the, I mean, it, it seems like you've done everything that you, everything that you have to do. Yes. Come on up and join us.
I think the intentions on the future development were still unclear. I'd like a clarification on that, Paul Krasinski, Five Star Valley.
Well, the roadway, Mr. Dean owns property, which is alongside this roadway, and presumably, it's our street. And presumably, if he's got 200 feet of frontage and enough land, he could put a house in on his land, a second house.
Correct, but the plans today are for a 12-foot roadway, correct?
Yes. And it would be simply if Mr. Dean wants to exercise the, the right to use his land for another house, he's going to have to expand the roadway to 14 feet. But we can't, we can't preclude him from using this street.
Right, okay.
If he wants to.
Understood.
But we're not encouraging him to. In fact, by making you do a 12-foot road, or having you do a 12-foot road, and saying that if you want to do another lot, you've got to expand it, that's a deterrent.
Right, and that, that was the clarification on the roadway, is it actually currently a 12-foot roadway versus a 14-foot roadway?
Well, it's 14 to Mr. Dean's house, and then down to 12.
Right, so it would need to be expanded.
It would be expanded if he wanted to do something.
Okay, thank you.
So, get us that easement document, and we'll approve this next, next meeting. And Bill, I think we can, I think we can close the public hearing, just so we don't have to continue to at time certain.
Is there a motion on that?
Well, maybe we better have, just because people may have comments on the, on the easement document. Okay, let's continue at two.
Twenty-seven.
At 6:30?
We've just done landscape at 6:45.
We've done what?
The landscape zoning article, it's a 6:45 on the 27th.
Oh, okay, I think that we can, I think that we can do it at 7:15.
We don't have anything else at that time, right? Bill? 7:15 on the 27th?
See you then. Okay, now, I'm going to announce again that Mr. Lynch's wife is in the emergency room, as is Mr. Lynch. And Mr. Lynch won't be with us tonight. And because the Hillside Street open space development requires a minimum of four planning board members, and because I have recused myself, there are only three members, and we can't go ahead with the hearing tonight. However, at 8:45, in five minutes, we will reschedule the hearing. And, again, we can start with the 36 to 50 Elliott Street.
And then skip over to-
But at, at, at 8:45, we are going to reschedule the Hillside Street hearing. Now, Mr. Cochrane, in the next two minutes, this is a site plan approval of the landscape plan, rather than of the entire project.
Correct. We are, I think that we have a handful of items remaining before we get to site plan approval for the final project, and I think we will be ready, trust we'll be ready for that on October 11th. We don't propose to come back on September 27th. We had a fruitful meeting with the town engineering department on Monday. It's turned to be quite a complex site in terms of water, and stormwater drainage, given the topography, and how to best handle the drainage, but there is consensus on how to do it. There are some final plans and reports that have to be submitted and reviewed. And we anticipate that the town engineering department will sign off on or about the first of October. Unfortunately, their consultant is on, is going on vacation, and she will not have a chance to review between now and the 27th. But what we thought we would do, we have a couple of things that we thought we could present and discuss this evening, and hopefully finalize the issues of discussion, so that we can submit to the board final plans for a review and approval on the 11th. We'll get you advanced copies of all of the final plans. We have a draft of an A&R plan to submit that the board can consider at its leisure, and, but we will be asking the vote to the board to approve the endorsement of an A&R plan on the 11th as part of the final process. And so I have copies of an A&R plan to share with the board. And what we really have, I think, is some final discussions about, in response to the recommendations of the revitalization committee. And with respect to that, some, some items that we would like to propose that would be included within the final landscape plan as part of the final site plan approval. I think the board, I know the board has received copies of the revitalization committee's recommendations dated May 9th. There were 11 of them, and what I think we can do is run through them quickly, and then Blair Hines has, landscape architect, has a new landscape plan that identifies some of the features that we, that we are recommending, that we would include in the final plan. Item number one-
Okay, stand down, we are now going to, we're now going to reschedule the open space development hearing off Hillside Street. And because I have recused myself, I'm not going to participate.
We're just scheduling the meeting, yeah?
So, we're meeting again two weeks from tonight?
We are, but the question is whether or not we meet next week to discuss this. Bill, you have a chance to talk to-
Can we do this, and you were going to, Alexandra, do the other piece in time?
Right, exactly, so it would just be this for next week, so. What did you want, did you have a chance to talk to?
Mr. Bobrowski can't be until eight o'clock.
On which day?
Wednesday.
Wednesday? What about Marion? There you are.
I can be here whenever you want, schedule it if you don't have it.
Do we talk on-
Wednesday. Eight o'clock would work for me, fine, on Wednesday, on the 19th.
Nineteenth.
Okay.
Bill?
You're on. You could if you wanted.
Can you make that?
We have to, but we can't.
Yeah, if you can't.
You can't.
Because you're going into a-
It can be taped, all right.
Here on a Sunday night, which means we're on a Monday as well, so.
Did, could Attorney Bobrowski do it on Thursday? Because I can do, I could do it at eight on Thursday.
I can't be here next Thursday.
You can't be here next Thursday, that's problematic. What about Tuesday? Anybody meeting on Tuesday?
Basketball night.
It's a public hearing.
I can be here.
Tuesday works. Marion, would Tuesday work?
Do Tuesday, 7:30?
Yeah.
If it's going to skip basketball, I'm making him do another meeting before that.
Tuesday, 7:30 would work for me. How about you, Mike, would that work?
This Tuesday?
This Tuesday, the-
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
I believe so, it's 7:30.
What time, Bill?
7:30.
You have to be here, you don't have a choice.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I'd suggest that you might want to ask Mr. Lynch about his availability, and if his wife is back in the emergency room now, you may have an issue.
How do we foresee that, though, Ella?
Well, you could call him up.
Ask him if she's going to be better next Tuesday night?
Well, just ask him what his preferences are.
No, that's reasonable, since we kind of need him here as well, all four of us.
That's right.
And were you able to check with Attorney Bobrowski on Tuesday, too? That'd be the other question. I can't do Mondays, no, I could do Mondays, but after 7:30.
Keep backing up, we'll be doing it tonight, Ella.
I teach on her birthday.
I'm asking Bernie.
Yes, I figured that's what you were doing.
He's texting me.
No.
Yeah.
Wait, he texts, but he doesn't receive texts.
He doesn't. He's calling, right?
The evenings are coming, I can't predict that she's going to be there.
Right, of course not, of course not.
Sadie Day, okay.
So Tuesday, 7:30?
Tuesday, 7:30.
Tuesday, the 18th, 7:30. Okay, to repeat, Marion, you're available on that date, and who else has to be here?
Our attorney's here.
He's available, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And aren't you having an expert witness coming also? Can you?
He's also available.
It's okay, so it sounds good to you people. Marion, okay, Tuesday, September 18th at 7:30, here in this room, we will take up the open space application for Hillside Street. Any questions?
Can we, can we talk about getting some responses to these questions in the meantime?
That's it.
Oh, give it to Marion, if Marion hasn't already seen it, give it to Marion. Marion, we got, we received a letter today, and there's some questions that we may need some responses on, so if Bill can give that to you, and then you could hopefully have the responses by Tuesday.
Right, before, so I can look at them.
All right.
Anything else?
I scanned it, I'll get it.
We can now resume the discussion on 81 Elliott Street.
Oh, that's it. I guess it's Bill, but since I didn't-
It's Nurse Now.
It's my now. All right, continue.
Okay, so, in that hiatus, John Zickowitz, who is here as the chair of the Board of the Revitalization Committee, gave me some additional copies of their recommendations in case the board needed to refer. They didn't have their, your copies from evenings past. And essentially, what we'd like to do is walk through the list of their recommendations, and establish how we believe we have met the recommendations, or may not for particular reasons, and try to reach some conclusion, so that we can incorporate final elements into the item. The first is that the general section about the appearance, and the appearance of the building specifically, the architectural appearance from Elliott Street, the building as presented, and that's a rendering that predates the five color schemes that we showed, and the board voted to recommend to the Board of Appeals as part of its recommendation to the board, it's color scheme number four, which I have, but in a smaller scale. But it's essentially that building, and that is the building and the footprint and the basis for building that the Board of Appeals has granted its variances. The balconies are the balconies, and the balconies are there. The Sullivan family is not willing to remove the balconies. And so I know that there is still some consternation among a handful, I believe, but we are moving forward with balconies. And we think we've done a very nice job of addressing the appearance of the balconies. We've agreed in the board, in the conditions, um, as part of the conditions in the Board of Appeals' decision that there would be no, um, bicycles, grills, or other things that would be stored on the balconies, that they'll be maintained in a clean and neat appearance. And I know some, Ellen DeNoyer, for example, who's not here tonight, but who I've met with recently to talk about some of the other public realm type of issues, has commented that, in her opinion, they are a nice way to bring the building to the street, the way of engaging the street. And I, and I think I've represented it, I believe that in the past. So balconies are the balconies and we're happy to talk about color schemes and how color schemes can be adjusted to soften the appearance of different elements of the building, but that's where we are. And so we think we meet the recommendations of section one, dealing with architecture. Two, there's a recommendation that the project perform a shadow study. And what we have said is that we are acknowledging that there is a significant shadow issue. I don't think we need to pay someone to study it. But this building faces north, it is proximate to the sidewalk in Elliot Street. From November through March, that sidewalk will be in shadow. And the Sullivans are prepared and committed to maintain the sidewalk free of snow and ice as they do the portion of the sidewalk that is between the site drive and, uh, in front of their existing property for the Hill House. And they'll do the same here. We don't think we need to do a shadow study to acknowledge that there are significant shadow issues. And in the winter time, there will be some snow and ice issues and we will maintain, Sullivans will maintain that and do that as a condition of site plan approval.
Question on that?
Yeah.
Have you ever had any complaints about your maintenance of the sidewalk along there? Has there, Bill, has there ever been anything registered, so?
Nothing we have heard, no.
Okay, so, that answers that, thank you.
Third issue is that we submit a comprehensive traffic study taking into account all the completed projects. Thirty-six Central Henrys, while Henrys isn't completed, Elliot Street and Two Adams Street. We did submit a traffic study, traffic study accounting for the traffic volumes. But we didn't do a comprehensive study of the traffic associated with those developments. And in particular, we're concerned about the notion of preparing a tra, any further work on traffic study when you might have to take into account the restaurant that was approved, that Fallon Ambulance Building, for which no traffic study was ever required and which will be the, in my opinion, as a former transportation official, one of the, the most significant traffic generator among all of the developments in the neighborhood. Um, in this area, that trap, that, that hundred-plus-seat restaurant will, as a destination location, will draw more traffic through the neighborhood than any of the other residential developments combined. And I don't think it would be appropriate to require us to do more than what we've done, which is study the impacts of this project, accounting for traffic volumes. But the traffics and the traffic impacts in this case are de minimis, um, at best, at, at worst. Back to number three, recommendation, oh, excuse me, with, with respect to number three, including bike racks and storage, there are bike racks provided for in, in the storage room on the lower level and, uh, and bicycle access and egress through the portion of the building, you know, right, as you come out the service area. But there is a large storage area in the ground floor of the building, a portion of the ground floor that's tucked into the hill where bicycle storage will be maintained for the residents. The next was to investigate the safety of truck arrival and departure in the proposed trash delivery zone here. This is the crown of Elliot Street. Elliot Street has truck deliveries being undertaken at all times of the day. There are, there's a truck, there's a specific truck zone just down Elliot Street that deals with the deliveries to and from, um, the liquor stores, the restaurants, um, and whatnot, and all of the commercial areas. We think that a very occasional, once or twice a week stop to roll trash out and load it out is can be done safely and it's not something that needs to be particularly studied. But, um, you know, the visibility is, is excellent at that location, at being at the crown, and so we think it'll be fine.
Another question on that, um, I bumped into somebody the other day who noted that the wheelchair accessible walk actually crosses over that delivery area and removal area and was just concerned about the possibility of trucks backing up or moving in and out as somebody's trying to access that.
Yeah, the trucks will not be backing in and out of here.
Okay.
They'll simply stop here.
All right.
The trash bins will be wheeled out.
Okay.
By, you know, be, by hand and then loaded into the trucks. But there's no room, there'll be no backing in of trucks, so there wouldn't be that type of conflict.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the fact is that now as part of the last major modifications to the front of the building, this sort of entryway now that's been created is right next to the doorway for the trash loading zone. It is, uh, it certainly enhances the obligation of, of the building owner to maintain this area free of trash, because it's going to be a prime entryway. But certainly we would be maintaining it free of trash in any event. And so in the other, as to show landscaping on the drawings, we've shown significant landscaping here and Mr. Hines will, you know, will get into that, uh, continue to get into that in some detail. The next was to preserve the architectural character of the Henry House and the Blue Spruce. We've done that. That's obviously a very important element for the neighborhood, but also the appearance from Elliot Street. It's a handsome building, we're going to maintain it. Landscape plan depicts trees in front of the building on the sidewalk. We've been back and forth on a couple of issues, the trees and then the notion of Baker Chocolate Walk and pedestrian-friendly lighting, which are the next two recommendations. I think there's been some debate. And our conclusion, based on the debate, is it's probably not reasonable to put trees in the sidewalk, particularly because we're putting significant plantings behind the retaining wall here. And as the alternative is to accept the recommendation to put pedestrian-scale lighting that's similar to the lighting that's, that's already in, um, in the central square, in the central avenue area and on Adams Street. And we've begun discussions with the town engineers about what's the appropriate distance between those lights. So whatever's reasonable, whether it's thirty feet, fifty feet, sixty feet apart, we're showing fairly close together on this iteration of the plan. But the, but the idea is that we, we think it's a good idea, it enhances the, the front door appearance of the building and it's a pedestrian, it, it, it makes the sidewalk more inviting. With respect to the chocolate walk and the brick, um, there are, you know, if you look at it particularly down in Central Avenue, you've got concrete sidewalks with banding of bricks with a couple of, where areas where people step out with these bricks enhanced. It's not showing exactly here, but the notion would be, um, that, that the two places where there's a step out from the walk, that you would ornament the sidewalk with some brick, um, you know, and perhaps a, a band along that carries that notion of a band, but it wouldn't be a fully bricked sidewalk. You'd want the safety that you get from a concrete, um, um, structure.
The idea would be to connect the two business districts.
Correct. And I know that the, the, the town has applied for a grant under the Mass Works program and this would, this would tie into what the town is doing, but certainly in between, in the front area between, on this property, the sidewalk's gonna be torn up pretty well in any event. To construction, we'll replace it as recommended. There's also a recommendation, I forget which number, about some seating, some pedestrian seating areas, so.
We have two of them.
We're showing one here just off of the, this entry on the, on the Eastley side of the building. There's a, there's another one sort of here and then the, if you put that. This is a feature that offers seating as well, so roughly one, one here and a third one. And so I think the last, um, issues, whether we could do something with the facade of the existing Hill House, I'm not sure that that is much we can do about that. The facade was recently repainted, there's not much you can do short of putting up a new wall, I guess, in front of it. But, um, you know, you do what you can and then the last thing is a design review process. We think we've been through that. We think this process has really been an important part of addressing the issues of design for the building. Certainly the comments that this board's had with respect to the, the, the nature of the, of the decks, that the coloring of the decks has been an important element of that. So we think that we've done, that we have met the spirit of all of these. We're certainly willing to engage in specific issues. And so I'd ask Blair to just go back through a little more detail on the landscape plan that's showing it. And then, um, questions and other comments we have to respond to.
For the record, my name is Blair Hines, I'm the landscape architect on the project. I'm not sure, is it working?
It's working, we're better.
I'm not sure how many times we've presented this plan, but I do want to say that it's evolved over, I think it's been three times in terms of incorporating feedback. And I think in the earlier, um, meetings, there was lots of concern in terms of the presence of this building in terms of the neighborhood. I think most of those issues have been satisfying, maybe not to everyone's satisfaction, but I think there's been a general feeling that the development has been very responsive to those changes, to those requests. Let's just back up and just broadly state that in developing a landscape plan for here, we really saw three primary purposes. You know, one, and very important purpose, of course, is to create an attractive and pleasant setting for the residents here. Secondly, is really to kind of mitigate the impact of this on the immediate borders, which in this case is the neighborhood at the, um, to the south, um, south, east, southwest of the development. And, and thirdly, to provide a, you know, what we were originally thinking was, you might say almost more of a back door. And I think one of the things that the plan has really evolved a lot over the past, um, maybe three months is really seeing that this building has, in a sense, two front doors. Although the main door in terms of the residence is of course facing south. In terms of its presence on Elliot Street, uh, I think that the, the, the design has evolved a lot to present somewhat of a front rather than a rear to Elliot Street, which we think was a major change as Ned was pointing out and is also reflected in the landscaping. So just to add a little bit of further detail, in terms of the improvements for the residences, we have a, a gathering area at the front, which will have benches, flower beds, and a place. So many of the tenants at these buildings are going to be older people. The idea was to create a very nice, pleasant, warm pocket there with, with various types of flowering, both verbatim material as well as shrubs and trees. And that's what we've shown as here. And then in addition, in terms of the residents, so that when they're looking out their windows, that they had a real sense that the, the building was within a landscape rather than just within a lot of grass. In terms of the mitigation of the development, in terms of a budding neighborhood, I think you've heard, and I'm just going to touch on a few, a lot of the things we tried to do was depress the parking, not try to. What we've done, the proposal to do is to depress the parking area. So all the cars are about four feet below the grade with the wall. And then in addition, lowering the grade even further, so there's a bit of an embankment here, so that the impact of the cars from anyone looking from above, you probably won't even see them. The idea of not having light penetration from the headlights affecting the, the neighborhood to the southwest. In addition to that, there was many concerns, although that during the growing season, of course, this is quite a thick patch of woods, when the trees lose their leaves, since there are no evergreens there, there was a lot of concern that this building would have, you know, undesirable, be an undesirable view. My opinion is that looking through the deciduous trees, you know, will certainly give a sense that building is far above. And I think the other thing is that this building is really quite low and it's been pushed down so that the effect of height of the building is really commensurate with the weight of, help me out here, Ned. The road up here is a west.
West side.
West side, right. But in addition to that, we, after talking about the neighborhood, the idea was to come in here with an evergreen planting that would act not only to help mitigate views of the building during the winter of new, uh, but also over time to diminish the presence of the existing Hill House building. I won't go into the long of it, but we also, there was issues about access from Morton Terrace and the idea was to provide a fence along with shrubbery and evergreen trees to again provide a sense of this development is not connected directly with the neighborhood. In terms of the presence along Elliot Street, in earlier plans, we had looked at the possibility of, of street trees and frankly, I was surprised, that really went over not that well. People were more, were mostly critical about it. So eventually we thought, you know, that, you know, with different concerns about whether you're gonna live and watering and, and salt impacts and so forth, they were eliminated from the plan. We are proposing very narrow, uh, growing deciduous trees along the building. There are kind of a very narrow growing red maple, which can eventually get forty, fifty feet tall, but it, since its habit of growth is very vertical rather than broad spreading, it won't be growing into the tr, into the building. And then in addition to that, there's flowering shrubs, there's ground covers, there's other more shade colorant perennials and so forth. So, you know, the direction from the, um, the developer has been to make it really quite nice and I think it would be attractive. I think another, um, you know, improvement that's been in the back of our minds from the beginning, and I know that the board had brought this up in our last meeting, was what's going to happen to the existing granite rubble wall. And, you know, there's currently with the several, the two buildings being torn down, there's a number of penetrations for sidewalks and driveways. And the idea is probably the whole wall will have to be removed temporarily in terms of getting the construction done. But the idea is to replace that wall and have that granite rubble wall along the edge of the sidewalk, accepting the fact that we want to create a little bit of a landing here with the bench and some steps that would go into the east side of the building. And then as Ned described earlier, this kind of larger entry portico here that I think in a lot of ways, what's nice about is it kind of disguises the fact that there's a, actually a utility door here and also providing ADA compliant access as well. And so, you know, the details of that, of course, get worked out in the next phase of design, but we're pretty excited about the, the fact that this would be a nice, very garden-like character. So, and I would be happy to answer any questions, I think I've covered the major points.
The blue rectangle at the entry on the, the main residential entry, is that a?
Those are flowers, that would be like a box, a low miniature box with flowers inside. Whether they're perennials or annuals, that's something that will, will be worked out later.
Fair enough.
Now the retaining wall at the back, is that existing?
Uh, there's a bit of existing, uh, there's a bit of existing wall. It starts about here, about twelve inches high, goes to about forty-two inches along the edge of the, what is it, kind of the major parking area for the Henry House. Beyond that, it kind of grains down and there's no wall, there's a little bit of stone in that area. So in order to get the, the garage and, most of that wall's going to be taken down. And we would use that granite as, if we, if we required it in order to fill in the granite work down below.
But that, that is presumably a. But that, that is presumably, uh- I mean, we, you're going to want to specify how that wall is going to be. What you say on this plan is, by the construction of the building, the contractor shall rebuild the-
Granite block wall.
Granite, okay, well, it's, it actually doesn't appear on what we were given.
No. It's too small for you.
So we're probably going to want a little more, a little more oomph to that, uh, description of the wall, about what you're going to do to reconstruct the wall, how tall it is, et cetera.
And that's the wall along Elliot Street?
Well, wall, and the wall along the be, the parking lot.
The retaining wall along the parking-
We want to, to know in words, how you're going to, what it's going to look like.
Well, I think that, I mean, our intention from the beginning is to rebuild the granite wall. Um, I'm presuming it's going to be about thirty-six inches high, but we don't know the height exactly yet in terms of the steps and other constraints, and so it, it would be, it, we're not looking at a twenty, something dinky there. I think the wall varies in height, but I'm, I'm presuming that the wall's approximately thirty-six inches high, and that would be, in order, may vary with the sidewalk grade and how we have to, uh, get the various access points into here.
What we're going to try and do, I mean, you've, you've described it pretty well, is we're going to try and put the description into words so that we have something that we can enforce.
That's fair enough. The only thing that we want to make sure that we-
And you are, Ned, uh, going to be in charge of that, uh-
What we, what we want to be responsive to is that, and we haven't worked out the details of this, is when you come down the accessible walkway, you want that to feel gracious and inviting, you don't want to feel like you're going into a little cattle opening between two walls, so what I'm not quite certain yet is exactly whether this wall responds to the opening to come up here. I mean, we're not looking at this from the standpoint of, oh, we want to save a little bit of stone wall construction, we're thinking about how to make this perfectly appealing because the elevation difference between here and here is probably, you know, less than twelve inches. Do you really want a wall between you there or, or not? And so we just would like to have a little, um, uh, freedom to think about it carefully, you know, and, and so that it's appealing to people who are using it.
What we can, what we can do is, uh, I mean, the wall can, this, the landscaping plan, and I assumed the wall was part of the landscaping plan, but we can always push the wall over to the next approval. If, I mean, that might be easier. You're going to have a site plan approval down the line. This approval is the landscaping plan you're getting today. We'll just say the wall is not part of the landscape.
Well, we'll, we'll have a paragraph or two that addresses the basic design of the wall, the materials that'll be used, and the general height, maybe varied at different locations to do A, B, and C, but we'll have a simple description and it's easy to understand and follow, it'll be written into the, sort of the conditions.
Okay, well, uh, however, you know, we want, we want something we can enforce.
Sure.
The red maple?
Yes.
I'm assuming those are relatively shade tolerant?
They're very shade tolerant.
Also salt tolerant or?
Well, they're going to be up above, they're not as, uh, salt tolerant as other plants.
But they're above on that?
But they're above the sidewalk.
So checking is an issue.
So I think they'll be, you know, they'll be largely protected from, um, you know, certainly splash.
Okay.
You get a little bit of wind, but the nice thing about trees is that in the winter, you know, they don't have any leaves, so they're much less susceptible to salt problems.
And this probably goes without saying, but just checking, are you, you're installing an irrigation system to take care of the plants?
Yes.
Okay.
And they're going to have a condition in the site plan approval that if the trees succumb, they've got to be replaced, and it will be-
Enforced.
Enforced, exactly. Do we know how big the red maples are?
What will the timeframe be?
How big are they?
He said they grow to forty feet.
How big are they when they go in?
I don't know. How big are they when they go in?
Shouldn't we know that?
Oh, no, it says, it says right here, calipers.
Okay.
Two to two point five cal.
That they'll probably be, that'll be about, um, about sixteen feet tall.
Okay. That's reasonable, I-
Okay.
Do you have a timeline for the, uh, to guarantee the trees, two to three years?
They're going to be guaranteed forever.
In that if one dies, it has to be replaced. Not that each individual tree will be guaranteed forever, but that they will be replaced as they, will we allow them to be replaced by something else if they're dead boys?
Of, of course. We will be very flexible. If the red maples don't work out, you can, uh, uh, try something else. But red maples sound good as long as you water them a lot.
Well, now, I think this is part of why we were advocating and we're pleased that the developer was, you, but you, we didn't have to talk him into having an irrigation uh, system. He was planning on one already, and so I think that gives us a good bet. I mean, usually if you have mortality, you get it in that first growing season, and so if they get through the first year, you know, you rarely have that, you know, something dying.
All right. Who wants to be heard on this plan? Yes, sir. Come and join us.
Good evening.
Good morning.
My name is John Zickwitz. Um, here is the co-chair of the Milton Village Central Avenue Revitalization Committee, and just wanted to speak for a couple minutes about our recommendations and, uh, the information I received tonight. Uh, it's nice to see that, uh, the majority of the recommendations have been followed through on. Things with the landscape plan and what's being planned, the sidewalk, with the lighting, and the, uh, and the, uh, the new, uh, the new entrance that was developed for Elliot Street, I think that's a big improvement with the way the handicap ramp was incorporated into that. I am a little concerned about what I hear tonight about removing of the stone of the granite wall. First I've heard of that, that there's some concern. I think there should be a lot of photographs taken before that is removed, so as a way to-
I agree.
Understand how it gets replaced, and then, and the material should be safe so that the same material can be reused in the wall when it's reinstalled. Obviously, our big recommendation about the architecture, we still have a great concern with. The balconies, I mean, I've seen there's been a little roof added to them, but, uh, they're still, in our opinion, they're still just tacked on to a long flat facade, and I think it's going to be a great disappointment when this gets built and you see that looming over Elliot Street, that you have these three things just tacked on to it without any integration into the architecture. And kind of interesting that they're not even showing up on this rendering here that has the landscape drawing on it. Balconies are missing, aren't they?
And we're not rendering it, but-
Well, it says porch.
Porch, porch, porch.
No, I, I think, uh, on that one, that's just, that was a rendering back in June before the-
Well, balconies have been there since May, since April, since March. Balconies have been there for a long time.
They're on the plan.
Balconies have never not been.
Yeah. So, um, I, we're still not in favor of the balconies, I don't think they're incorporated well into the architecture and it's a disappointment.
Well, it is a disappointment, but I think that we're stuck with them.
Well, I don't think we're stuck with anything. You're in design review, you can change the design of them.
I don't know. I don't know.
Buildings approved with variance with balconies.
Oh, I ain't saying they're approved with the balconies, but the design of the balconies can be reviewed.
Well, I mean, if they're, look, John, if you have a better design for the bal, if you've got, we're going to commission you.
Okay.
Without any pay.
Yeah, see, neither is a catch, right?
To give us some ideas of how the balconies can be improved.
Remembering that they've already said that cantilevering would cost-
I'm sorry?
They've already expressed that cantilevering the balconies would cost too much relative to what they're able to do.
Well, because of their construction.
Yeah.
So, uh, but, but give it, give it a whirl because, uh, I, they are, they are troubling, and if they can be made better, uh, that would be a wonderful, uh, a wonderful achievement. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, anyone else want to be heard on this application? Yes? Of course.
A little unfamiliar with the process and the project itself and a-
This is a, a unique process.
I do watch it on television, so I'm a little familiar with more so the Hendry's plan. My name's Mark Christop. I live in Waldo Row. I actually wrote a letter to the board back in January getting that project, and my thought was that most buildings that are built in that district, meaning the Lower Mills, Central Ave, Adams Village, uh, Milton Village area, that are larger and multi-use buildings, I thought should be built out of brick. I know that the process hasn't specified much about building material, composition, et cetera, but I think it's critical in, in the Lower Mills District where we have a preponderance of large-scale footprint buildings that are multi-use, that are built out of brick, and really a better building material, that we're not looking and mandating that these buildings, either this project or the one thirty-one Elliot Street, um, building, uh, have those requirements put in place. Personally, I think the building's a little bit large for that site considering it's a two, uh, two, two-family, from what I understand, two, two-family, uh, building lots. They're now being, uh, rezoned to allow for much larger development.
They're not being rezoned.
Okay.
This is a variance and, and the issue was that the developer said, "Look, I'm willing to do something smaller than I do if I had to proceed under the comprehensive permit law, but I will proceed under the comprehensive permit law if, uh, you want me to." And, uh, so we were a little bit under the gun here.
Okay. Certainly I don't understand the process and perhaps I shouldn't be speaking on those issues, but I just at least wanted to see if I could find out why, and, and I don't know if we're leaving the process, why there aren't, there are, there isn't criteria that's put in place to dictate what type of buildings we want in terms of composition. I hear a lot about landscape and other, where I'm going to consider more extraneous issues, but I really think when you look and focus upon a building that's being built, you really want to build quality down there. It's a great addis.
They said that they met with the neighborhood on innumerable occasions and worked with the neighbors and the Central Avenue Revitalization Committee, Committee on the building and on the materials and how it's going to appear. I, I mean, this is not something that they just proposed. There were many, many meetings.
Another thing to note is that this building is solely residential and is fitting in with the materials that are used for residences in the area, rather than the materials that have been used for commercial buildings. So if you look at the commercial buildings in the area, those are all brick, and in fact, if you look at thirty-six Central Avenue, the commercial portion of the building has the brick facade, but the residential portion of the building has the hardy plank to look more like a residential building in that area. So this particular building is more consistent with the residential buildings by not being in brick. Now, if this were to be a commercial building, then we might possibly consider it brick more closely as a material, but the fact that this is a residential building, um, suggests that a more residential, uh, material would be used.
It also, if I may, um, the first lo, the first floor is a stone material. It was, so it's stone, wood, to gable, shingle, and it was done, we considered brick to wood, but we did, we really did want to take into account scale, neighborhood appearance, that, there are brick buildings, um, but that this area, because of the residential feel, because we're continuing up Elliot Street, where there's other wooden structures, that we wanted to carry that, and there was a lot of discussion about that type of material, building material and decision, that did result from a couple dozen meetings with neighbors and other committees. We spent, um, I, I, I really have to hand it to my client, because we spent eighteen months before we filed the first formal application to do anything. And we, we changed and changed and changed in response to comments and issues and questions arose during that eighteen months.
Neighbors with whom you spoke would have been neighbors within the Milton Hill neighborhood organization?
I'm in a butter.
I understand, I know.
And, um, my neighbors had a lot to do with, Frank, forming the design of this building. After we filed, we've had, I think, seven nights before this board, at least, a couple of nights before, one night with the select committee, and a couple of nights with the Board of Appeals. This building has continued, uh, has changed in that process. We've arrived at footprint, height, building presence that we've basically drawn our line in the sand on, and which has been approved by the Board of Appeals for variance process. And what was the final elements is to try and make sure the site plan works, that we address issues of, issues of scale relative to things we can do on Elliot Street with plantings, with sidewalk improvements, with lighting and other things, and that's, and we're at the-
That's commendable. I will say though, I'm not a member, our, our neighbor within the Milton Hill neighborhood, so I wasn't as aware of his project certainly. Had I been, I probably would have spoken, uh, sooner than, than I am at this particular point in time. Just to pick up on a point though that you mentioned, Miss Dennis, about the si, the, the, the consistency of construction with other, other pure residential, uh, buildings in the neighborhood, um, I would point that maybe the Milton Hill House itself, which is entirely a residential structure, that's a large-scale structure, much like this one that is built entirely of brick. So I mean, I could point to that one in particular and say, "Why are we not emulating on this particular campus a building that's more consistent? What, what lays there?"
You absolutely could, but I would note that the Milton, um, revitalized Central Avenue, look, the Revitalization Committee has specifically asked that the aesthetics of that particular building be improved, so I don't think they would have considered it a valid, uh, um, precedent for this particular building.
Okay. Although I, I think in my eyes, and I think most people would agree, an improvement in terms of building material selection would be brick versus wood or wood-filled structures too. So maybe the appearance of the brick of the structure as it sits now, and it's something that looks like it was built in the sixties, might not be what's most notably attractive for that site, but it doesn't mean that all brick structures can't be built in such a way that they're very attractive looking. I think that it could be built in nicer, only at a location.
They could have been a brick structure, but they, they did something else, and, uh, the, uh, the time has, uh, has passed for, for your suggestion, but we will keep it in mind in the future.
If I could just follow up on one other point, I know that's a little late, but when you talked about also the, the buildings emulating all the structures in the area, uh, that, that are consistent with a wood material, all those structures are far smaller than the structure that's being proposed here too. So there are few inconsistencies, I think, in the analogies that are being drawn between the buildings, and I would have really, really, really thought that this board would have pushed a little bit harder to build better quality structures, especially something we've seen decent-
Bear in mind, this is a building approved by the Board of Appeals, not by the Planning Board.
Okay.
You'd question the process, this is an unusual one in that the special permit came from the ZBA, whereas a site plan approval is coming from the Planning Board. For something like, for example, one thirty-one Elliot Street that wore thirty-six Central Avenue, that was a special permit and site plan approval with the Planning Board only. So this has had two different boards dealing with the jurisdiction of this particular project.
Interesting, okay.
With special zoning that was approved, it had specific details about building materials and architectural noises, et cetera.
That's true.
That don't apply more broadly to this-
To this particular project, yes. It's a good point.
Thank you for your time. I still think we could do better, but that's, I, that's my opinion.
Well, there's, one can always do better, but, uh, the question is, do we have something that's satisfactory, and I think the landscaping, which is all we're dealing with tonight, is satisfactory. And, uh, shall we, uh, shall we tell them that?
Are we all in agreement?
I believe so.
All right.
No, I want, I do.
You do? I move that we, uh, register our approval of this landscape plan.
Right. With the caveat that the wall construction, we need, and I think John is right, we do want pictures taken, and we want that the material to be saved on site.
I believe you wanted that to be added to the site plan approval portion.
Well, it'll be on, it's going to be, we're going to get, they're going to produce something, and it will either be on site plan approval or on this plan. But, so, we have the motion, and I think I heard your second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fine.
Continue to
Oh, as well
October 11? Yes, October 11?
October 11, Bill.
You're wide open.
6:45?
Okay.
Put you guys on first room.
All right. I think that we should approve Mr. Gordon's plan.
Oh, yes.
It's not Mr. Gordon's plan, but I think we should approve it. Seems to me I just saw Mr. Gordon. Gun Hill Street A and R. I looked at it and I think it's okay.
I think Phil's responsible.
We did this, we did this at the last meeting, and I said I need to sleep on it.
And you slept on it.
And I slept on it, and I think it's okay.
Did it crumple?
I think this is not what we're endorsing with these, or our way.
Yes, you are.
We're signing these?
With the houses. Okay, that's fine.
No, you're not going to endorse this.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Exactly, so
He's removing those, okay. So we'll authorize
Okay. Authorize Mr.
Clark.
Clark to execute this plan as not requiring subdivision approval. I, and thanks for coming in. Did you enjoy our meeting?
Good for you.
Just get better timing than I do.
All right. I think we've got the motion. Did we vote on it?
Oh.
All right.
We, we were working on the motion. We hadn't actually
Okay, the motion was made to authorize Mr. Clark to endorse this plan on behalf of the board that subdivision approval is not required.
So moved.
And Mike?
I think he wants to sign it.
Why isn't it, why is subdivision not required?
Because it, every lot has frontage, the requisite frontage on Gun Hill Street.
And therefore, we don't have to go through
And therefore, there is an exception in the subdivision control law defining subdivision as the division of a parcel of land into two or more lots, which this does. It divides it into four lots. However, in the subdivision control law and the definition of subdivision, it says a subdivision shall not be a subdivision if all the lots have the requisite frontage on a street. And here, all the lots have the requisite frontage on a street. Therefore, this is not a subdivision. Therefore, subdivision approval is not required. And section, chapter 41, section 81p, provides that in that event, the planning board can endorse this plan, subdivision approval not required.
This is a zone B.
What is the frontage, 100 feet?
100.
Zone B, go.
Feet.
100 feet.
100 feet.
Again, I'm going to ask you as a rookie member, is there any consideration made of the way they accomplished this frontage?
Yes, they have to maintain the frontage a certain distance back, parallel to the frontage line. And that's what these lines are. This, on this plan, they show the lines, the dotted lines that are back from the street, show that they have maintained the amount of width for the requisite amount of space.
They still have accomplished it in a very unique way.
Accomplished it with the use of pork chop lots, that some people think are bad. But I've always had rather a fondness for them.
This is some pretty wild pork chops.
Well, it just, it, it avoids unnecessary streets.
I believe the access to these two are both going to be down, drive-by, that way, right? I mean, we're not, we're doing that.
We're endorsing the plan, and we're not discussing driveways.
We'll discuss driveways. I won't take it there.
You have C D questions?
Yes.
And the new plan will not have the, or the plan that gets signed. We can eliminate the houses, and thank you very much.
All right.
So the, so the very back lot
Right.
accesses his lot over the second back lot's land?
Yes.
Except we're not allowed to talk about that.
He's got, he should access it through his frontage, and, and it doesn't.
Why doesn't he?
Well, this is not something we should, we need inquire into.
It's not part of the A and R.
It's not part of the A and R plan. They have the requisite frontages.
It doesn't matter how they accomplish it.
And they have enough room to access, and we don't have to, we don't have to go beyond that. Is, are these lots accessible through their frontages is our, is a question that we could ask, and it looks to me like they are.
I could drag your explorer across.
I know. Was there any wetlands there or anything?
Any.
That's delineation?
Yes. And that is a separate parcel that will be conveyed to someone else.
Maybe, again, maybe I'm not educated enough in this set, but it would seem to me that you want to go through subdivision. Look at the wild situation you have there.
Because they have frontage, you don't have to, or you're not required to.
No, I understand, I understand the criteria you've set up, but it's just, it wasn't colored.
We didn't, we didn't set it out. It's a, it's a strange law.
Verbalized to me.
It's a strange law where you obviously have a subdivision. But the statute says it will not be considered to be a subdivision because all the lots have the requisite frontage.
I would suppose that we want to accomplish things that don't create problems in the future. Do we know that they have an easement here so that there isn't, you know, when people sell and buy these houses, so that this person that thinks he has a driveway that comes in here finds out that it's not his land?
That's not part of the A and R process.
It's a good question. It's just not part of
That's not part of the A and R process.
Fire hydrants? No.
No. That's subdivision control.
Okay. As subdivision.
So no fire hydrants required?
None.
Oh, you say that subdivision, so if this had to come through a subdivision, then we can address those issues.
If it went through subdivision control, it would, it would be a
Well, that's kind of my point. Do you think it should, considering how oddly these laws are?
Not be kind, it is subject to an exception. If you say the exception doesn't apply, then it could be subject to subdivision control. But you have to come up with a solution as to why the subdivision, why the exception in the subdivision control law to the definition of subdivision doesn't apply here.
I'm going to ask you one more question. And again, I'm trying to educate myself here. The requirement in this zone is to have 100 feet of frontage.
Right.
How could you come before the board without 100 foot of frontage? I mean, everybody that comes here should have
You come in with a subdivision and ask that you waive the frontage. You have to create a lot that doesn't
So the only time you have to go through subdivision is when you don't meet the zoning requirements?
Well, when you're building a street. If you're building a street, then you've got to go through the subdivision control law, because the frontage of the lots on the street to be built, it's an existing where you have an existing street that's already constructed, and you have the requisite frontage on that existing street. They say we don't have to go through the subdivision control process because the street is already there. And subdivision control has a lot to do with streets and the construction of streets for subdivision.
So if you build a new street and you still have the 100 feet, you still have to go through subdivision?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, say for example that there was enough land to put six lots under the zoning, except they didn't have enough frontage to do that. Then they'd come to us under subdivision control, say we're building the street, and they can do the six lots.
And I still have 100 feet.
And then they have 100 feet on the new street. And, yeah, exactly. But because they have the 100 feet on an existing street, they don't have to come to us under subdivision control.
All right. Ed?
Common sense, there should be some study of fire protection in the area. Who makes that study? The building instructor?
No, the, the town BPW, if they need another hydrant, the town has to install on Gun Hill Street.
Bill's role to inform them, like give them a copy of the plan?
Yeah, have Bill. Well, Bill, would you tell the people that we're having some new houses here, and they should look at their fire hydrant availability?
Yep.
That's it. That's all we can do.
No catch bases, no nothing?
No, nothing.
Nothing.
Okay. Wait, I need a second this month. Well, I'm in a second.
You guys jump in fast. He wanted to be seconded.
We don't have to vote on this.
Well, we have to vote on that.
One of you has to vote on it. Yes, Mr. Clark.
You can, you don't have to take a vote. But they can, but they can take, the A and R can still become
I understand. I understand.
I might want to finish the sentence.
If we just, if we just, if we don't act within the requisite period, and you filed it with the town clerk, then after 20 days, which is probably expired of, it becomes, it becomes law.
Kind of a poor process.
It is a poor process. It's not a great law, but it's the only law we have. So the motion has been made and seconded. Let's see how we do with this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. You have unanimous approval to proceed. Give the my largely Mr. Clark. And we look forward to another great development.
Thank you.
All right. You can briefly have my discussion finished.
Well, the very brief discussion is that I believe the contract is still on your desk for signature. Have you signed it? You signed it? All right. So we're waiting for the contract to be signed. I'm done. Can we do the minutes though? Because I know Gene's wanting us to clear up our
Okay, I've read the minutes. They look fine to me.
I'm happy with the minutes. I will move, hang on, let me find which ones. I would move approval of August 9th, August 23rd, and July 26th.
Second.
Third. All in favor?
Aye.
They've already, she's signed.
Good job.
Okay. So we have, I have been talking with Mr. Conley on the 131 Elliott Street, and he has asked that we defer signing our decision of denial.
Okay.
And next meeting, he may have something to, something to say. And if he doesn't, we will, we can execute the decision of denial. But, yes.
I have some comments. I can't find them right now.
All right.
What I'm getting at is I'll go ahead. I'm sorry.
You can get, get any comments to me. With any luck, we, what I see is that he may want to come in and he said, hold this thing in abeyance, see if we can come up with a substitute plan, a complete substitute plan, and then substitute the thing. Once we get it in shape, outside of a formal hearing process, but with public involvement, once we get it in shape, file it, re-advertize, and Mike will be able to participate in. I mean, the, well, Mike will then be on board for this thing. And all the it, it sounds like, I mean, with, I've got my fingers crossed, but it sounds, it sounds like it might, it might be a way of moving forward on this.
We've been wanting to work with him all along. If he wants to come in with another plan and discuss it, I'm happy to discuss it. So
And you, and you just said you
So we'll hold off.
Solicit any comments we have on these, on this denial.
You, you can, you can comment.
The commenting process, I think you totally do, is they go to you.
There's no reason you can't.
I'll send my comments directly to Alex.
Okay.
All right. I move adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.